Minuteman, we're ready to go. Good evening. The meeting will now be in order. I see that there are sufficient number of voters present to allow us to open the meeting. And this evening, we will continue with the annual town meeting warrant, beginning with Article 33. The meeting is taking place tonight in the gymnasium and the auditorium. And to vote on an article, you do need to be occupying a seat in one of those two rooms. Masks are required in the auditorium and strongly recommended in the gymnasium. Live coverage of this evening's meeting is being broadcast by Minuteman Media Network on our local access channel nine and streaming on the web at wwwminuteman.media/government. The meeting is also being broadcast live on our high school radio station, WIQH 88.3. And I would now like to invite Chief Judge to tell us what we need to know in the unlikely event of an emergency during the meeting. There's a button on that that you might need to slide forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Moderator. So in accordance with the Massachusetts Fire Code at an assembly, I'm going to share with you some information about the exits. In the gymnasium, there are exits on the wall on your left and in the corners to your right. There is one behind the screen that you can't see. The exit sign is blocked, but I assure you, the exit is there. In the auditorium, the front corners of the auditorium have the exits and at the rear, up the stairs, on the back wall. In the event of an emergency, please just go to the nearest exit and exit to the outside. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Judge. And on behalf of the meeting, I want to thank Chief Judge and the Concord Fire Department, as well as Chief O'Connor and the Concord Police Department for their assistance during town meeting. We also owe a big thank you to the team that makes town meeting possible. That team is too large to thank everyone individually, but you all know who you are. Last night, the meeting elected Ms. Carrie Flood of 1289 Main Street as deputy town moderator, who will take over the duties of the moderator if she's unable to fulfill them. The deputy moderator has been sworn to the faithful and impartial discharge for duties, and this evening, she will be presiding in the auditorium. I want to introduce our hard-working, elected, and appointed officials, who are at tables and in the front row in the gymnasium. To my left is the Finance Committee. The Planning Board is here in the second row to my left. And the Chair of the Select Board is here at the front table, and the other members of the Select Board attendants are in the front row. The Select Board and the Finance Committee and the Planning Board have all spent a lot of time and energy to understand and analyze issues before us tonight. You'll find the Finance Committee and Select Board recommendations on the articles inside the Finance Committee report that's available on the tables in the cafeteria. And if you've not yet perused the FinCom report, I do encourage you to do so. You'll find that it provides excellent data and analysis of our town's current and future financial picture. The Finance Committee has 15 members, who are appointed by the moderator for three-year terms. With this town meeting, the terms of five members come to an end. And I'm reappointing Dee Ortnor of 169 Thoreau Street for a second term of three years, expiring May of 2025. And I'm appointing, as a new member of the Finance Committee, Suresh Batya of 441 Sudbury Road, for a three-year term expiring in May of 2025. I thank them and all the other members of the Finance Committee for their willingness to serve our community on this committee, which, as most of you know, is not an insignificant commitment. Speaking of the Finance Committee, I still have three openings on the Finance Committee. And if you would be willing to bring your energy, commitment, and good sense to understanding and advising your fellow citizens on financial issues impacting the town, please consider volunteering to serve on the Finance Committee. The town's also in search of more citizens willing to donate their time and talent to the conduct of town affairs on other boards and committees. You can read about the important roles that our various boards and committees have in the annual report, which is out on the tables this evening. You can also read about the boards and committees on the town website. Volunteer cards, which look like this, are available on the materials tables out in the lobby, in the cafeteria, and they're also available on the town website. We really depend, as a community, on the work of our volunteers, and we need more. So please consider it. If you've not stopped at the tables in the cafeteria to collect materials for tonight's articles, you'll want to do so. Some of the articles will be moved as printed in handouts, and many of the articles are further explained by information on the tables. You'll also find a green booklet entitled "Town Meeting Traditions and Procedures", which is a procedural guide for this evening's proceedings. If you do have questions on town meeting procedure this evening, I invite you to consult with our able town meeting resource person, Elise Woodward. Ms. Woodward is seated in the front row, and I'm going to ask her to stand and wave. Here she is in the gymnasium. Thank you, so you know where she is. Thank you very much, Ms. Woodward. We also have with us this evening, from the office of Anderson and Krieger, our Town Council, Mina Marcarius. Mr. Marcarius will address the meeting if we have a legal question for him. I've appointed Mr. Abe Fisher of 400 Hayward Mill Road to be head teller, Mr. David Carr of 82 Lawsbroke Road to be ballot supervisor, and Richard Wells of 368 Lawsbroke Road to be assistant ballot supervisor. Mr. Fisher will supervise a standing counted vote, if we require one, and Mr. Carr will supervise the counting of ballots, should the meeting vote to take a ballot vote. Mr. Fisher, are the tellers ready to be sworn?
We are.
Thank you. Mr. Carr, are the ballot counters ready to be sworn?
Yes.
Thank you. Tellers and ballot counters, whether you are here, in the gymnasium, or in the auditorium, would you all please stand and raise your right hands? Thank you very much. Does each of you swear that you will faithfully and impartially perform your respective duties at this town meeting? Thank you all. And on behalf of the meeting, I thank Mr. Fisher, Mr. Carr, Mr. Wells, and each and every one of the tellers and ballot counters for taking on this important role for us tonight. All voters should have received a voting slip when they checked in. This voting slip's a different color every night, so last night's, yesterday's doesn't work today. You need today's. Your voting slip is what enables you to vote. You might want to keep your name on it and keep it handy. We do have some visitors to our town meeting tonight, and we welcome you. Each visitor should have registered in the cafeteria. Visitors must sit in the visitors' section, which is marked at the end of the bleachers, closest to the cafeteria. We will now turn our attention to the annual town meeting warrant. Presenters, your time for presentation tonight will appear on the clock that you will see on the side of the screen, and I'll ask you to please do your best to stay within your time. When we open the floor for comments and questions, please approach a microphone, state your name and address when your microphone is called. That's how we verify that you're a Concord-registered voter. Please remember that tonight, we are a legislative body with a moderator presiding. Your questions and comments are made on behalf of the Assembly and should be addressed to the moderator and not to the speaker at the podium. Every speaker from the floor will have two minutes. The clock on the screen will track your time. And one last word before we begin our work as Concord's legislature tonight. Our town seal bears our town motto, Quam Firma Res Concordia. We now have middle-school Latin scholars who can translate it, but I'll do it for us tonight. It means, "How strong is harmony?" Voices and harmony are not all the same, but they've found a way to work together. As we deliberate tonight on the articles, let us make our own voices heard, recognize the value of voices other than our own, and find the voice of our community. And we'll now take up Article 33. Chris?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Excuse me.
Mr. Flint?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Burton Flint, Planning Board Chair. I move that the town take affirmative action on Article 33, as printed in the warrant. The article makes changes to the zoning map and the zoning rules for the Thoreau Depot Business District. Given the length of the article, please refer to the warrant. The Thoreau Depot Business District establishes special zoning rules for the area around the intersection of Thoreau Street and Sudbury Road. This illustration shows a district as it exists primarily today. It's mainly commercial buildings surrounded by parking areas. These are the high level of objectives of the article in a nutshell. Make it more likely that housing is included in future redevelopment. Advance the town's sustainability goals by facilitating transit-oriented development. And implement dimensional requirements and design standards that reflect the look and feeling of Concord. As many of you know, every 10 years, Concord creates a long-range plan to identify what the town does well, what can be done better, what's coming down the pike that may require new thinking. The current plan, published in 2018, passed the Planning Board with 55 action items, and this slide shows four of the key priorities that we've been working on. Point one, as a town, we're challenged in creating housing that's affordable both for people that qualify for housing assistance and market-rate housing that is within reach of young families, civil servants, or many retirees on fixed incomes. We need to do more. Point two, it's projected that by 2030, 34% of Concord's population will be 65 years old or older, up from 20% in 2010. And the school-age population will decrease to 14% of the population, down from 20%. Household size is decreasing. Housing needs are changing. Point three, there are a lot of good things in our village centers, including the Thoreau Depot, but there are significant challenges as well. Local retail in the age of Amazon is strained, and some commercial properties sit vacant for years. I want to emphasize point four, encouraging transit-oriented, sustainable, mixed-use development near train stations. This is a graph taken from an EPA-funded study that compares the total energy use of conventional suburban development versus transit-oriented development broken down by housing types, single-family, detached, and multifamily. The vertical axis is BTUs of energy consumed, and I know it's hard to read, but then that takeaway is that multifamily housing near transit, even without using green building techniques, uses 60% less total energy. It's inherently more sustainable. So, mixed use near our train stations aligns with town priorities for housing and sustainability, and it's the lodestar that guided the Planning Board over the last three years as we developed this article. Now, as it turns out, mixed use is already allowed in the district. However, it's not getting built, and working with town staff and the planners of the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, the board identified key existing impediments in the zoning code. The current open space requirement for mixed use is two times the gross floor area of the residential portion. Adding a single floor of apartments over a shop means that the building footprint has to be less than one-third of the lot area, and that's before taking into account parking. Adding two floors of housing further reduces the footprint. It simply doesn't pencil out. So Article 33 provides that instead, the open space should equal 15% of the lot area, and it should be high-quality and publicly accessible. If Article 33 results in any new housing being built, even though we're reducing the open space requirement, it will result in a net increase in open space in the district. Another impediment is the current affordable housing requirements don't work for smaller projects. We go from having zero affordability requirements if you build four units of housing to 20% requirement if you build a fifth. We're proposing to scale the requirement more incrementally. For projects with five to 10 units, 10% must be affordable, and for greater than 10 units, we're sticking with 20%. We're also defining what we mean by affordable to ensure we get real capital A, affordable housing that counts towards the town's subsidized housing inventory. That may seem counterintuitive to reduce the requirement if you want more, but we think this flexibility could spur housing that otherwise is unlikely to be built, and the affordable housing community has expressed support for this article. The board heard a lot of concern that this article raises the height limits of buildings. In fact, our original proposal did raise the height limit, but in response to public input, we're staying with the existing 35-foot limit, though we're changing how that's calculated for pitched roofs. Today, it's measured to the mean height of the pitched roof, and so the actual height of the ridge can vary depending upon the size and angle of the roof plane, and it can easily extend beyond 35 feet. An example being Concord Crossing, the mixed-use building with Farfali on the first floor. It's three stories, but the main ridge of the pitched roof is 43 feet tall, and the highest point, not including the chimney, is 47 feet tall. Going forward, we'd measure to the actual highest point of pitched roofs, with a fixed limit of 38 feet, or nine feet lower than the Concord Crossing building today. Current zoning allows buildings to go to 40 feet tall anywhere in the district with a special permit. With the proposed changes, we're significantly reducing the area where a special permit can apply, such that the only place eligible needs to be 125 feet from a residential district and 100 feet from a lot line. That's effectively the center of the Crosby's Lot. And given other requirements, a 40-foot building there, again, under a special permit, could only be built behind another shorter building to screen it from Sudbury Road. We're introducing new dimensional setback requirements to define how buildings meet the public way. The new zoning would provide for a minimum of 12 feet of setback from Sudbury, and with a maximum of 20. And for Thoreau, it's a minimum of zero with a maximum of 12. By having limits on the front yard setback, we help define a street wall. The goal here is to have more buildings and usable public space line the streets, improving walkability. A smaller-scale setback for Thoreau with a more open boulevard feel on Sudbury, with plazas and green space in front of shops. For parking, we propose prohibiting parking in front of buildings, moving it to the rear to minimize the visual impact and improve neighborhood walkability, like in Concord Center. We also reduce parking requirements for smaller housing units, to reflect that these are near public transit and likely to be occupied by single people or couples. Today, in the district, there are no design guidelines, nothing that requires a building to fit in with a neighborhood or be of quality of design. West Concord implemented design guidelines several years ago, and it's had a real impact on the quality of the projects. The design guidelines for Thoreau Depot, as partially illustrated on this slide, will steer developers and provide future Planning Board's criteria for site plan reviews. Today, the border of the district doesn't align with a lot line on the Crosby's Parcels. To provide that the new zoning rules apply to all of the existing property currently under commercial use, we propose moving the district boundary to the actual lot line, as shown here, just to show that difference. So with all these changes, what could be built? Here's a hypothetical maximum build-out for the Crosby's Parcels. This is not an architectural design for an actual project. It's a massing illustration of what's possible. Building one has a commercial ground floor of equal size to Crosby's and Rockies. It's got three floors of housing above, though that would require a special permit because of the height. Buildings two and three are smaller, forming the street edge, and there's open space where today there is none. In total, 63 housing units, somewhat smaller than the recent Brookside Square 74-unit mixed-use building in West Concord that created eight units of affordable housing. This is a crude massing model, so what could actual designs look like, and what about on smaller lots? Here are two recent examples of mixed use near the West Concord Train Station. On the left, the Concord Outfitters Building. It reflects the context of the Beheral Street Mills, has two vibrant local shops on the ground floor, two apartments above, essentially no onsite open space, unlimited parking tucked behind the building. People love this building. On the right, an approved design for a new three-story building at 13 Commonwealth Ave, evocative of Damon Mill, eight rental apartments, including two affordable ground-floor shops that extend the street wall, replacing what was a car dealer's parking lot. I think the West Concord design guidelines are working. And if this meeting supports Article 33, down the road, future Planning Boards will do site plan reviews for each individual project as they're proposed. Traffic studies will be performed, modern stormwater engineering required, and assessments completed for sewer capacity, design, and public amenities. As I said before, our intent is these changes would make it more likely that in the future we would see more mixed-use, transit-oriented development that aligns with town priorities for housing and sustainability. Thank you very much. I appreciate your consideration.
Okay. Mr. Flint, you can catch your breath now. We'll hear from the Select Board from Ms. Escobedo. And while we're waiting for her to approach the podium, could we please have a second for the motion? I see that we have one. Thank you.
Madam Moderator.
Ms. Escobedo.
The Select Board recommends affirmative action on Article 33. Thoreau Depot is an important commercial and commuter center for the town, which also has great potential for mixed-use development. The Planning Board carefully studied the current conditions and zoning for the district and applied best practices in land use planning to arrive at this zoning bylaw amendment. Developed through a public process, the regulations incorporated neighborhood concerns about building scale, the streetscape, and use of open space, while increasing the opportunity to generate much-needed housing in walking distance to the MBA station along with less car-centric retail and commercial infrastructure. Recognizing that most of these private properties are privately held, the town cannot control whether any future development will occur in the district. Yet through this zoning, we can shape the outcome, when and if it comes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Escobedo. Before we open the floor to take up our discussion of Article 33, I want to take a moment to discuss the quantum of vote required to pass the article. Ordinarily, a supermajority of at least two-thirds of the voters at town meeting is required to pass an amendment to the town's zoning bylaw. However, in 2021, the legislature amended the State Zoning Act, specifically Mass General Law's Chapter 48, Section 5, to reduce the quantum of vote required to enact certain types of zoning bylaws from two-thirds to a simple majority. The amended statute in this regard is not a model of clarity, and towns have so far had very little experience in trying to interpret it. However, it's the moderator's view and the view of Town Council that the zoning bylaw amendment proposed by Article 33 is of a type that requires a simple majority vote pursuant to the recent amendments of Chapter 48. If the meeting does pass Article 33, it is the Office of the Attorney General that will review the bylaw before it takes effect and will determine, among other things, whether a simple majority is the correct quantum of passage for the bylaw. And it's certainly possible that the Attorney General could conclude that Article 33 requires a supermajority for passage. Accordingly, I am going to declare the vote two ways on this article. First, whether it passes by a simple majority, and second, whether it passes by a two-thirds vote. In that way, whichever quantum of vote the Attorney General determines is the appropriate one, we will have an accurate record of whether the meeting has passed the article by the required margin of votes. Okay, so it's a long-winded explanation, but I know there's been a lot of concern about the quantum of vote on this, and that's what we think, and that's how we're going to address this. Okay, so the floor is now open for questions and comments. And as I mentioned last night, we'll start with a two-minute time for every speaker from the floor. If we get to a half an hour of discussion on this article, and I'm not talking about any amendments which could be made, but a half hour of discussion will reduce that time to a minute and a half, because inevitably, we do get a little repetitive after a half an hour. Microphone number three.
My name is John Ellis at 62 Belknap Street. As an abutter for 40 years, I oppose Article 33. The February 2020 Open House introduced MAPC to support zoning bylaw changes and produce design guidelines. For comparison, a West Concord group developed design guidelines from scratch. A Select Board created the West Concord Advisory Committee to assist the Planning Board in applying these. Why did the planning community hire a consultant for the Thoreau Depot? One, I assume the workload for Invision 2030 exceeds the available bandwidth. Number two, a MAPC-branded solution was expected to be a platform for constructive change. After 27 months, where are we? The zoning and the use bylaw changes are well-scrubbed, but height and volume metrics are excessive. This 15-acre space is assumed to be big enough to satisfy conflicting aspirations by incentivizing private investment. It's not credible. The 26-page MAPC-branded New England Design Guidelines were delivered 10 months ago, but there's been no Planning Board review or opportunity for community input. Unfortunately, the design guidelines have little in common with the diversity of Concord's business districts. Section 4.5, page 33 in your book, is the glue connecting existing buildings with the new look buildings. Quote, "Where applicable, respect reinvent original structures through strategic additions that will enhance the visual interest and reinforce the modest scale of the district." Close quote. How can the new zoning that maximizes the volume of the new buildings mesh with the modest scale of the district? In any event, ongoing architecture and community input beyond individual project site reviews is required while build-out progresses. How will this be accomplished? If Article 33 is adopted, a visitor calling--
Mr. Ellis, I am sorry. You're going to have to wrap it up.
Okay. A visitor recalling the shot heard 'round the world and the 19th-century genius cluster might well ask. With Concord's legacy, why does it now simply copy others?
Thank you. Microphone number three again.
Hi, this is Carol Savoy. I live at 61 Belknap Street. The objective of Article 33 is to incentivize development by changing requirements to make it easier to build. Large mixed-use buildings cannot be built today because of current zoning requirements related to parking, height, affordable housing, and open space. People ask, "What happens if we don't change the zoning?", that they could build these scary buildings that the Planning Board shows in their presentation. That is not true. If you vote no on Article 33, no large-scale development can happen because of current zoning requirements for parking, height, affordable housing, and open space. And that is exactly why the Planning Board wants to change the zoning requirements in Article 33, to incentivize developers to build taller buildings at excessive density scale with less parking, less affordable housing, and less open space. There is some confusion on design guidelines, so to clarify, the design guidelines are not part of Article 33. They are not law. They are not zoning. They are not voted on. They are a separate document from zoning in Article 33. Design guidelines are only guidelines. You can have design guidelines without changing the zoning. Design guidelines can apply to the current zoning. So by keeping the current zoning we have today, we can have reasonable development that includes affordable housing, preserves village character, supports our local businesses, and protects the environment and quality of life for Concord residents. We can also have design guidelines to ensure any development fits within the neighborhood. This can be achieved without rezoning. So please vote no on Article 33, because once gone, lost forever. I would also like to make a comment on the West Concord examples that were built with design guidelines. Those are two floors, not three floors, not 38 feet, not 45 feet.
Thank you very much. Ms. Flood, in the auditorium, is there anyone waiting at a microphone?
Yes, there is at least one person, and I think a second in waiting.
Let's go to the auditorium.
Go ahead, please. I saw you first.
I'm Janet Fury, 95 Conant Street, Concord. I have many concerns about this article, not the least of which harks back to using a Metropolitan Boston Consulting Company. We're not Metropolitan Boston, as far as I know, to oversee this process and a lack of doing any traffic impact research. But I have at least one item that I would like clarification on. Currently, a hotel and/or motel can be built-- Metropolitan Boston Consulting Company. We're not Metropolitan Boston, as far as I know, to oversee this process and a lack of doing any traffic impact research. But I have at least one item that I would like clarification on. Currently, a hotel and/or motel can be built by right in the Thorough Depot area. This doesn't, does need to be changed. In the warrant for town meeting, page 33 in the Blue Book, the principal use regulation of the zoning bylaws, Amendment 4.2.9, moves hotel-motel from its current by-right category to special permit. At least a hotel and/or motel cannot be built then by right in this proposal. But the reason is stated in the Thorough Depot Business Zoning Updates FAQ document is that it ensures that it, hotel and/or motel, is part of a mixed-use development, ensures. In fact, a hotel does not seem to be required in a mixed-use development. So question one, what does ensures mean? Two, does the Planning Board want a hotel and/or a motel in the Thorough Business District? And if so, what are the specifics an application would include in order to be granted that special permit?
Thank you very much. Mr. Flint, would you take that for us?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm not quite sure I understood where you were pulling the word ensures from. Could I ask you to repeat that?
Yes, it's in the updated FAQ document online, 2022.
Okay.
In a chart, and it's about the reason for the change. And the answer is that it ensures, quote-unquote.
Okay. So a general comment on the use table, because I wasn't able to address that in that sort of quick coverage. There's a use table that applies to the Thorough Depot and for all the special zoning districts in town. And we went through that, and there were, we did not add any additional uses. We removed some uses. So no, there would be no additional gas stations. Car dealership can't be built by right anymore. And with respect to a hotel, extended stay, hotel or motel, the thought was that while that could be a benefit to the district under certain circumstances, that what we're really trying to focus on here is a vibrant retail and dining and housing district, rather than having a large, you know, like a residence and kind of thing in the district. But under certain circumstances, it would be appropriate under a special permit. In reviewing a special permit, there's criteria in the zoning code in terms of what particular things are looked at that are consistent across any special permit under the zoning code.
Can you explain what those are?
I will ask the town planner to get them, and then I'll read them to you in a moment while we listen to another question.
Ms. Hughes.
Do you want me to? Ms. Reese, am I supposed to take another?
No, hold on just a moment. We'll hear from Ms. Hughes. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Moderator, pursuant to Section 11.6 of the zoning bylaw, under a special permit, there is criteria A through H. Oh, no, that's site plan. There's criteria 11.6.1, impacts on economic or community needs. 11.6.2, traffic flow and safety concerns, including parking and loading. 11.6.3, adequacy of utilities and other public services. 11.6.4, impacts on neighborhood character. 11.6.5, impact on the natural environment. And 11.6.6, fiscal impacts, including impacts on town services, the tax base, and employment. I'd also like to point out, if I may, Madam Moderator, any development would also require site plan approval, which is under 11.8. And there are criteria A through H under Section 11.8.5 that would also have to be required.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll take the next speaker in the auditorium.
Go ahead, sir.
Frank Feely, 347--
Excuse me. I, excuse me. I would like to propose an amendment.
Okay, you're going to have to wait, and we'll come back to you because your time is up. I'm sorry. Go ahead, the next speaker in the auditorium. And if you don't mind coming to the gymnasium with that amendment, that would be great. Thank you.
Frank Feely, 347 Lexington Road, President of the Concord Housing Foundation, speaking for myself and for the foundation. Three quick points. There's nothing, despite all of the history in this area, there's nothing particularly Thoreovian or colonial about most of the structures here. And in fact, if you look at the design guidelines or you look at the properties behind Chang'an, they look much better than some of the other buildings. Number two, I fully understand the concern about having a full-service grocery store. It's permitted under the old and new regs. Neither of them can require it. We'll have a grocery store as long as there's enough trade and as long as it's profitable. And finally, I just want to make it clear that the best can be the enemy of the good. And I think the zoning board has done the right thing here by slightly scaling back the requirements for affordable housing. But what Mr. Flint didn't mention is there's also a requirement that if a partial unit would be indicated but not required, that there has to be a payment into the town housing fund. So I can't think of a place in Concord where we could get smaller units, multiple units, and affordable units without cutting down a single large tree or paving over anything that's not already paved. So I urge your approval of this.
Thank you very much. Do you have any more speakers in the auditorium?
I believe there are at least two more.
Okay, let's go to one more.
I think-- in the gray sweater? Over here. I think you've been waiting?
In a gray jacket?
He was waiting first. Yeah.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Moderator and fellow citizens of Concord. My name is William Andrews. I live at 83 Grant Street, where my wife and I have been for 34 years. The area proposed for rezoning is part of the historic area of Concord Village, shown in the 1852 map of Concord. The rezoning plan presented by the Planning Board has focused on business development. It always ignores the historical significance of this area and its relevance to two of Concord's most famous citizens, Henry David Thoreau and Daniel Chester French, who was responsible for the Lincoln Memorial, apart from the North Bridge sculpture. Between 1844 and 1850, the Thoreau family built the first house they owned on the far side of the train tracks on what was Texas Street, now Belknap Street, and then moved around the corner in 1850 to 255 Main Street, which was later purchased by Louisa May Alcott. The proposed rezoning area includes the two earliest shops on Thoreau Street. The first opened in 1902 on the corner of Thoreau and Middle Streets, sold groceries and fruit. That's now Concord provisions. In the following year, another selling groceries and meat was built on the corner of Thoreau and Belknap Street, now Priest Cleaners. Their original architectural style should be preserved. The original 1884 Concord Depot was built in 1895, and another building which served as a Boston and Main Railroad Express Office, now Bedford Farms, was added around this time. The Concord Depot became an important stopping point in the anti-slavery Underground Railroad in which many Concordians, including Thoreau, worked during the war. The height of the modern red brick buildings on Thoreau Street was limited so that the Concord Depot would stand out as a landmark. The proposed rezoning would permit these buildings to be rebuilt at twice the height they are now, thus dwarfing the Depot area and destroying the integrity of the original design. What we do today really matters, for once our heritage is lost, it will be gone forever.
Thank you very much. Did you, did you want to address something, Mr. Flint?
If I may. I know there's been a lot of concern. I respect the comments from Mr. Andrews, and I read his letter in the Journal. I just wanted to address specifically with respect to historic buildings and what this could or could not do. If you could pull up that slide 22. So while we're waiting for it to come up, Concord Provisions, I'd studied the history of the district a lot and looked for historic buildings and pictures of them, stories about them, and there's not that many compared to other areas of town, which makes them all the more important to preserve here. And Concord Provisions is actually a really good example of how the, how many of the best things in the district are not the product of the status quo in the district today. It was built before modern zoning. If it was built today, it would be about half the size it is with a parking lot out in front. For its current use, it required, to be conforming with zoning, it requires nine parking spaces. For comparison, across the street at Sorento's and the UPS parking lot, that's 10 parking spaces, and it's about 80% of the size of the entire Concord Provisions parcel. So to do anything with that, that means with that building, you need a special permit. If you, if you change the use to a restaurant or if you add housing to it, you need a special permit. Article 33 wouldn't change that, right? Because it's non-conforming today. If you, if you were to take that building and you wanted to redevelop it and take advantage of Article 33, which is about housing, it doesn't change the commercial requirements, you'd first have to cut the building in about half. And so ask, I'd question the sanity of any property owner that begins by getting rid of half of the usable space that they could lease on their lot. You put in the parking, and then they decide they want to put in residential per Article 33. Well, then give up another 15% of the lot to the open space requirement and additional for parking. That's if you, and then if you're putting one unit of housing on there or two units on one floor, your building at that point is down to about 25% the size it was. It's more or less a hot dog stand with a studio on the top. And I very much doubt that anybody would find that to be the financially sane thing to do. The fact of the matter is that the historic buildings in the district are all non-conforming. And in a sense, they're protected by that non-conforming value, because that's about the maximum amount of building you can get on that lot. As you can see, it's not even entirely on the lot. Part of it's into the public way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have an amendment. And the amendment is that Ms. Fury moves to amend Section 4.2.9, Table 1, to change the yes-to-no instead of yes-to-special permit. And this addresses hotels and motels. Ms. Fury, would you like to come to the podium and address your amendment? And Council will let us know whether he thinks this is clear. It's actually Section 4.2.9 of Table 1, changing that from a yes-to-a-no instead of a yes-to-a-special permit. So please come to the podium. You have a moment to speak to your amendment. We'll now turn our discussion to this amendment. I know lots of you have been waiting in line, but the only speakers we're going to take now until we vote on the amendment will be on the amendment. Go ahead, Ms. Fury.
It just seems to me that allowing or allowing a motel and/or a hotel in the Thorough Depot area is excessive. It does not speak to parking issues that are going to come up. It does not speak to the walkability goal that Concord has in its warrant. And it would not keep the character or enhance the character of the Thorough Depot area. It would change it.
Okay.
I believe people coming in may come by the train, but certainly many of them will come by car, which is not what we want.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second for the amendment? I see that we do. We'll now, would the Planning Board like to address the amendment? They would like to address the amendment. They're just going to take a moment. And then we'll open the floor. Go ahead.
So the Planning Board's recommendation is to vote no on the amendment. We went through the use table. We didn't get a lot of public comment on our changes to the use table, and perhaps that this is something that could be changed in the future. But we did feel that, under certain circumstances, a hotel or inn in the district might be something that, meeting the criteria that you heard read out earlier, would make sense for the district under a special permit review process. Thank you.
Mr. Flint, stay there for a moment. There were a couple of questions that Ms. Fury had that didn't get answered. One was whether or not the Planning Board would like to have a hotel or motel in the Thorough Depot Business District. And the other is, if so, what are the specifics that an application would have to include in order to be granted a special permit? I think actually that one has been answered by Ms. Hughes, the second one. Yeah. So the real, really, the question is what, whether the Planning Board would like to see a hotel or motel in the district.
I don't think, I don't think the Planning Board ever had a consensus on that. Our focus was on the housing element. We did go, we did give some consideration to the hotel piece, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't characterize it as support or opposition on a hotel.
Thank you very much. All right, we're speaking to the amendment now. Microphone number two.
Madam Moderator, I'm George Corret, 148 Peterspring Road.
Mr. Corret.
What I'd like to address is this misconception that automobiles are going to be important 10 years ago, I mean, 10 years from now. Here's an example. You know, three years ago, if I had called for a Lyft ride from this location right here to my home two miles away, it would have said, "No, thank you." Right now, Lyft is telling me I can be picked up in five minutes, and I'll be out of here. People might like that, but anyway. So, you know, the thing about hotels is that it's not likely, maybe 10 years from now, that people will be driving to, you know, some bed and breakfast or some hotel mixed-up type thing that might be developed near the Thoreau area. So I think, I think it's better to have the flexibility, you know, of a special permit because of that, because of the complexity of things. It's never, it's never good to say no. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go to microphone number, does anyone over there wish to speak to the amendment? No. Anyone over here wish to speak to the amendment? Step on up.
Sue Felshen, 19 Sunnyside Lane.
Ms. Felshen.
There was a question earlier about the word ensures and the fact, and perhaps the Planning Board can confirm if I'm correct about my interpretation. But when it says ensures that a hotel would be a mixed-use development, I believe it means if there were to be a hotel, then it would have to be a mixed-use development rather than a freestanding hotel, and not that a hotel would be required in any way, shape, or form in the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Flint, you want to confirm that for us?
Kristin Hagerty with the Planning Board. And thank you, Ms. Felshen, for that clarification. That's correct. We did not intend to ensure that a hotel motel would be built there. It was in the event that it was, that it would not be exempt from that same mixed-use premise.
Thank you very much. In the auditorium, is there anyone who would like to speak to the amendment? Ms. Flood?
Please raise your hand if that's the case, but I think you were all standing before the amendment was made. Is it right now? Yeah, they're, they're waiting for the main motion.
All right. So having no one else who would like to speak to the amendment at a microphone, we're ready for a vote on it. All those in favor of the amendment to Table 1, to move the hotel or motel to no instead of special permit, please raise your voting slips. Thank you, all those opposed. Okay, the motion fails in the gymnasium, the motion to amend. And how about in the auditorium, Ms. Flood?
Could I please see the people supporting the amendment again? Could I please see the people supporting the amendment again? And the other way around? I believe it fails in here without counting. You think yes? The, yeah, the assistant town clerk is agreeing that it fails here.
Okay. The amendment fails then, and I do so declare, and thank you very much. We'll now return to our discussion of the main motion. And let me go in the gymnasium to microphone number three.
Thank you very much. I'm Dick Cross, and I live at 38 Academy Lane. The significance of our historic village has been a tenet of our responsibility as a citizenry ever since zoning was enacted in 1927. The language in the Formula Business District Amendment that we just passed yesterday emphasized that point, it, it said, "The Formula Business District purpose is to maintain a unique, small-scale, small-character, eclectic ambience, visual appeal, and quality of life in those districts." From time to time, ideas do arise from well-intentioned government, political, and developer interests that run contrary to these ideas. And those impose tough decisions. They are to oppose it or allow it, protect it or lose it kinds of decisions. But our decision tonight is not one of those protect it or lose it decisions, because we've got some options to have it both ways, to have our cake and eat it too. Because right now, there are two things that we can do to move forward without that acrimony. First is, we can come back with a less extreme zoning amendment that also amends the flaws in our current protections in Thorough District. Second, our continuing pursuit, along with Thorough Village, of the controversial project, or the controversial project, or less controversial projects for residential diversity, like the one we just passed yesterday, are available to us and will continue. The only requirement is really our courage, our courage to deny the pressures of government standardized programs, in this instance, cookie cutter, large-scale, large-density residential, that will open the gates to the disappearance of historic Concord Village. I please say-
Mr. Corret, you do need to wrap it up.
Okay. Vote no. Let's commit to regather around this and do it the right way. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone number two.
Madam Moderator, Joe Stein, 21 Thorough Street.
Mr. Stein.
Thank you. I live in the Thorough Business District. I've been here for 10 years. While I'm generally in favor of light, mixed-use redevelopment, the amount of development this incentivizes is excessive. This is a dense, accident-prone residential area. If you add 95 units and 150 to 200 new cars, this will create significant parking congestion and neighborhood cut-through issues. Starbucks is already a mess, and unfortunately, there have been fatal accidents along Thorough Street where I live, and I fear this will only get worse. In terms of height, four-story buildings are not appropriate. Yes, they are allowed by special permit. But historically, the town has been very accommodative to developers. Just last year, for example, the town received 35 special permit applications according to the annual report, and only one was denied. Some claim that this rezoning is sustainable, yet there is no requirement for any green development, and there is also no guarantee of any open space per Section 71134C. Creating a walkable community near the train with affordable housing is a great goal, but there is no requirement in the long-range plan to overdevelop this area and destroy the quality of life for residents. I respectfully suggest voting no, reengage with the community in a proper two-way dialogue and not a one-way MAPC presentation, and return next year with a better plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Microphone number one.
Moderator, thank you. My name is Dan Drazen. I'm a resident of 197 Bellknap Street.
Mr. Drazen.
Thank you. I stand before you as a resident of this town, but I also stand before you as an advocate for the folks who are not in this room tonight. And those are the folks who don't live here. Those are the folks who could benefit from this proposal in front of us. I am strongly in favor of Article 33. And the reason for that is that we have a housing crisis here in Massachusetts, folks. I want to zoom out for a second and underscore the fact that we have not been building enough housing across the Commonwealth. Between 1960 and 1990, we built twice the amount of housing we built from 1990 to 2020. So 900,000 units in the first 30 years, 470,000 units in the second 30-year period. And that's created a, a large disconnect between supply and demand. Housing prices have increased between 53% from 2009 to 2020, and rents here in Concord during that same period have jumped 45%. So I'm advocating for the folks who want to live in this town but can't afford it because there aren't enough housing units. This, if we continue on the same path, folks, will this town be affordable to your kids? Will this town be affordable to your grandkids? New apartments, condos will give empty nesters and seniors an option to downsize, and it will free up single-family homes, taking some pressure off the housing market. And I want to conclude with my second point, and that is, by a show of hands, how many people have walked from Sudbury Road to the front door of Crosby's Market on foot? Not too many of us, and there's a simple reason for that.
All right. All right. That's enough.
We have an opportunity to improve this district, and Article 3 gets us there. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to the auditorium and see if there are people waiting there.
Okay. Carmen, I have six people in line, most of whom were in line before the amendment was offered. So I'm going to go, I think you were next, sir.
Good evening, Madam Moderator. My name is Bill Kaiser. I live at 8 Middle Street with my wife. I've been here for over 40 years. During that time, the Thorough Depot District has had buildings, residents come and go, but the neighborhood collegiality, charm, character, and, yes, quaintness have remained. Now, Article 33 is proposing zoning changes that will severely and permanently change the character of this neighborhood, I believe not for the better. Article 32, which we approved last evening, is diametrically opposed to the provisions of Article 33. 33 encourages and incentivizes construction of the 95 new housing units in the area, 65 in the Crosby, 63 in the Crosby's area, and 32 in Thorough Street. How will this shoehorning of additional units with attendant additional human and vehicular congestion preserve the individuality and distinctive appeal of the Thorough Depot area? How will this improve the district, as Mr. Finch asserts? This zoning amendment, I believe, is not only unnecessary, but will markedly exacerbate the traffic congestion already existing. During the morning and evening peak traffic hours, driving on Sudbury Road north and south is a nightmare. A line of cars awaiting the light change extends regularly all the way back, blocking the orifices of Grant Street, Crosby's. People are trying to merge, exit, enter, and when the train comes through, forget it. Though the likely increased vehicular density is not going to make this any better, it's just going to make it worse. So in conclusion, I feel this proposal is not necessary. Thorough Depot Design Guidelines, as noted before, can be drawn up now, without the need for zoning changes-
Thank you. You need to wrap it up. Thank you.
And that is the end of my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker in the auditorium?
That would be you at my right. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Allison LaRue, and I live at 216 Sudbury Road. Interestingly, the only residence in the Thorough Business District that's actually in the Business District. I was deeply moved yesterday by the collaborative effort that went into creating and passing of Article 25, the Assabett River Bluff Preservation. This preservation will enhance the West Concord community and protect the environment and is a win for everyone. Unfortunately, this is not the story for the Thorough Depot neighborhood. The Metropolitan Area Planning Council came to town at the invitation of our planning board, under the guise of sprucing up the area and giving it a directive for the future. They conducted gatherings at Harvey Wheeler, where local people spoke about what was important to them in our neighborhood and what could be better, but none of this was of interest to MAPC. It was all just to lull us into the sense that our opinions mattered and would be taken into consideration when planning future development. This ploy was a classic switch and bait. We were cynically and fraudulently encouraged to engage in a dialogue that had zero impact on the bottom line, which is transit-oriented development and the intense increase of housing density. This development model was created over a decade ago, well before COVID and the transition to remote working. Suddenly, the planning board was presenting the new zoning outline with claims that had been developed by the community, and with the exception of the preferred roof lines and the color of the doorknobs, it most certainly was not. What is most painful is that the passage of Article 33 is being framed as the progressive option, with the green and white signs donning the town supporting the yes vote.
You'll need to wrap it up. Thank you.
This deeply flawed article is not progressive.
Thank you very much. Next speaker in the auditorium?
That would be the gentleman in the blue jacket here, and then you would be next.
Good evening, Madam Moderator. My name is Kevin Feeney. I live at 32 Southfield Road. Been in Concord for about 38 years, and I just wanted to offer a couple of personal observations. My vote on this would be no, because I get a front-view seat every day of the traffic congestion that happens on Sudbury Road. Let me give a couple of examples. Just recently, in the last couple of months, I've noticed that traffic several times during the day on Sudbury Road going eastbound backs up beyond Southfield Road. And that's a pretty good distance from the, from the train tracks. Well, as I'm sitting in traffic there, I notice some drivers getting out of the eastbound lane, crossing the double-yellow line, getting into the westbound to take a left on Grant Street. I can just imagine the day a car coming off of Grant Street hits and meets that car coming off of Sudbury Road. And while I'm still in traffic, I get up over the train tracks and invariably, because Starbucks is a dead-end traffic situation, cars wait in the parking lot on Thorough Street. And I can just imagine the time that somebody's going to get rear-ended as they're waiting to get into the parking lot to cause a chain reaction that will go up over the tracks, and then some poor person is going to get stuck between the gates when the train comes. Good luck. That's the reasons why I'm not voting for Article 33. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now return to the gymnasium, and let's start over here at microphone number one.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Kate McAnaney. I live at 58 Walnut Street. I'm also a member of the planning board, and my comments are on my own individual behalf. I admire the efforts of the planning board, including myself, and the planning department. We really did struggle mightily to bring forth some of the aspirations of a long-range plan, which is our mission as a board. There are a couple of things that I found difficult to find my way into supporting this amendment, and I say them here in the hopes that one day we will, we will have something like this. So one of the things that we don't have are specific numerical goals for the different kind of housing that we aspire to have in Concord one day, including diverse housing, affordable housing, different categories of affordable housing. And without having those specific goals, it was hard to weigh the, the trade-offs in, in having those. So something like the long-range plan, we can, we hope that we can meet all our goals without giving up anything, or without any maybe temporary pain and suffering of something like construction. But in reality, there are trade-offs. So I think if we have specific goals, then, and we can say, oh, if we do this, it might be difficult, but look, if we build this many units here, it gets us all the way to our goal, and we don't have to build it somewhere else. But without doing that, it's really hard to know what we're getting for what we're giving up. So I, I would hope that someday the town does that. The second thing is that right now, the commuter rail parking, 40% of the capacity, is by lease on that property. I don't think we should incentivize the development of the property without the town making a deliberative decision that either we can, it's a good idea to give up that up because we think that parking's not coming back. Before COVID, it was fully subscribed. Or we have an alternative, an alternative to it. Even conceptually, we can think of alternatives, for example. So those are my two comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Microphone number two.
Sven Weber, 50 Bellknap Street.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I want to speak to two points. One is actually the proposal here increases the size of the Thorough Business District. You saw a little map where the residential area that currently goes through the Crosby's parking lot is moved to the Crosby's parking lot border. Two years ago, when the whole process started, it was mentioned with great pride that because the residential line went through the Crosby's parking lot, the town had negotiation power to come to a deal to have commuter parking on the lot. Today, the story is different. I said, oh, no, it's not the case. That was never the case. It is just to bring the line in line with the boundaries of the property. Unfortunately, there's another property line, a property in a different corner of the district where this adjustment is not made. So the main reason for making that adjustment is just to ensure that there is enough distance to the residential line to increase the height of the buildings at a certain spot in the property. So just to clarify that there is, this small adjustment will lead to most likely to, yeah, losing the commuter parking on that lot when there is a redevelopment because the town has no negotiation power. The other one, just a small remark, is I was on the edge on this until December, no, until the planning board meeting after the December hearing. And the main reason is, we spent hours on that December hearing. There were a lot of participants. There was a lot of input. And with a stroke of two sentences in the meeting, the planning board meeting after that, it was determined that there was no single comment in that meeting that would cause any change in the proposal, no matter how small. And I found that just unbelievable. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Microphone number three.
Marty Plotkin, 54 Francis Street.
Mr. Plotkin.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Concord talks a good game about climate change and racial justice, and I believe it's time to put our policies where our mouth is. We need to find ways to increase density. It's widely agreed, pandemic or none, that doing it around hubs of transit is the optimal way to do that. Most of the work that we've done so far has been focused in West Concord, and a lot has been accomplished. There's only one other place in Concord where this is even something that can be discussed, and it's the Thorough Business District. And I think it's fortunate that we have the kind of landscape where it's possible to make the kind of zoning changes that are being discussed here. And I think it's time to do it, and I urge a vote in favor of Article 33.
Nope, 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 nope. Not going there. Thank you very much. We'll go to the auditorium now and see if there are speakers waiting there.
Yes, I have seven. I'm going to go with the gentleman in the pink shirt there.
My name is John LaRue. I live at 216 Sudbury Road. Like a previous speaker who also lives there, we have lived there for 22 years. I love Concord more than any other place in the world, and it's because of that that I stand here in support of this article. When I think about what I love about Concord, it's not the view from my front window of the Crosby's parking lot. the Crosby's parking lot, which is objectively an eyesore. It's the amenities and it's the people. And to preserve both of those things into the future, we need more housing in Concord. There is no perfect place to put housing, no place that will inconvenience no one. But I can't think of anything closer to perfect than on acres of asphalt sitting next to an existing transit hub. So I believe that this article will improve Concord, but that's not really the reason I support it. The reason I support it is because it will benefit the planet. The National Academy of Sciences recently published an astonishing conclusion. They said, even if America completely decarbonizes transportation and electricity production, we still will fall short of our Paris Climate Accord goals. Put that another way, if we all drove electric vehicles and we all had solar panels on the roof, we still would fall short. And so if you drive an electric vehicle, you have solar panels, good for you, but it won't mean anything if we don't change the pattern of residential development, if we don't accommodate the future population growth in walkable, dense, transit-oriented neighborhoods. I live across the street from what may become a big development. Clearly, there's some possible personal downside for me: traffic, noise, construction, maybe even impairment of the property value. But I realize that this proposal is a test of the sincerity of my convictions, and I've made my choice. I hope you'll join me.
Thank you very much. Let's go to the next speaker in the auditorium.
Yes, that would be you here.
Thank you. Amity Wilcek, 24 Thoreau Court. So there's much in this article that I really like, and I really appreciate the thought that has gone into developing the zoning amendment. Many of the thoughts in there, including the thoughtful attention to setbacks and the provisions that would make it a more walkable neighborhood, which has been uniformly stated as an important goal for the residents of that neighborhood and for the town in general. I also appreciate that there have been opportunities for public input, although, again, I also have been dismayed by the lack of action taken in response to the input that has been received. So all that being said, I'm not going to be voting too affirmatively on this action. I'll just say I am, in fact, an analyst for the Department of Transportation. My specialty is in climate resilience and equity. I am speaking here as a private citizen tonight, but I just want to say that these are issues that matter very deeply to me, that I research deeply and think about a lot, and so this was a really great struggle for me. Like others who have spoken here before me, I think we can do better. We saw a really wonderful example of the Assebad Bluff project that was a holistic approach that ensured both open space and relatively higher-density development in a smaller area. I think we can work more to ask the planning board to come back with proposals that limit the overall density so that we can create housing that is both climate-friendly and also, frankly, equitable. People here have spoken on behalf of those who are not yet residents of the district. I think those who are already or not yet residents of the neighborhood, the neighborhood, many of the people in the neighborhood have said that high density will be detrimental to the neighborhood and for those future residents. So I urge us all to think about those residents and ensure that we provide not only affordable housing but equitable and desirable housing for the future residents of Concord that's in line with what the current residents enjoy: not reduced open space, not reduced parking, there's no bicycle lanes in Concord.
Thank you very much. You will need to wrap it up. Thank you.
We're not ready yet to be -- the only transit hub in Concord is the train station. There's no within transit in Concord. If that's a commitment, we need to think about that in the consensus of.
Okay, we need to go to the next speaker. Thank you very much. One more speaker in the auditorium, and then we'll return to the gymnasium.
I believe it's the woman holding her laptop. Pamela Dritt, 13 Concord Green. I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this proposal, but as both our own sustainability directors have said, in order to protect Concord from the ongoing climate crisis, we must electrify everything and green the grid. That means we have to require new construction to be all-electric, heat pump for heating and cooling that will be really necessary during increasing heat emergencies coming up. Every new gas building built represents at least several decades and thousands of dollars wasted in dirty and dangerous fossil-fuel infrastructure, not including the tons of global warming-causing greenhouse gases it produces. We can't legally require builders to build all-electric heat pump heated and cooled buildings now, because the Mass Building Code requirements, which by law we must follow, don't include that option. And it doesn't look like the state will include permission to require all-electric as part of the new net-zero-stretch building codes that are now being drafted. It doesn't look like President Biden is going to invoke the War Powers Act to build heat pumps like he proposed recently either. But we can incentivize builders to do it with creative special permit code writing, just as we've done with the new planned residential development special permits, where builders get to increase the density and number of dwellings while increasing our shared public open space at the same time. This is a win for the builder and a win for the town, much better than subdivision developments of giant McMansions on small lots. But Article 33 doesn't do any of this. There's no incentives for building electrification or EV-charging infrastructure at all, not even in special permits applications. It needs to be redone to include these incentives. No matter how many new housing units nor how well-designed the buildings are, if we don't incentivize the green-building techniques we need, we won't be able to meet the energy goals we set together.
Thank you, Ms. Dritt. We're going to go back to the gymnasium now. We've been at this for an hour, and we had a little foray into an amendment that took us about 10 minutes, but I think we're ready to go to a minute and a half as time from the microphone. So we're going to do that, starting with speakers here in the gymnasium, so please be concise and pithy. We'll start over here with microphone number three.
Sue Felsham, 19 Sunnyside Lane. In five or 10 years, when the state finally gets around to electrifying the commuter rail -- and by the way, ridership is coming back, although I'm sure it will be up and down -- then we will have shorter, more frequent trains, which will no longer block the intersection. I'm sure you're thinking, why don't we wait five or 10 years then before we do anything about the zoning in this area? Because by then, it's very likely that something will have been rebuilt and we'll be stuck with it for 50 years. I would second like to say that I am very proud of the history, the proud history of Concord, in being progenitors of environmental movements and in upholding natural lands protection, to the point where we have something like a third of lands in Concord protected. If we continue building projects like the wonderful Assebad project we passed yesterday that have five units of housing and five times as much land protected as housing built, we will kill our planet. It is time to not just protect the beautiful lands, but also protect our whole planet through smart, village-oriented development, which is actually more like an 18th-century village, where people did leave fairly densely together before sprawly zoning was invented. I urge your yes vote on this article.
Thank you very much. We'll go to microphone number two, and it's Mr. Collis, yes. Mr. Collis is a British citizen, but he is a very longtime resident of Sudbury Road, and I've given him permission to speak. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Yeah, David Collis, 120 Sudbury Road. I endorse a lot of what the opponents of the proposal have been talking about this evening, but I have a very different, and I think very important, perspective on this. Development is very easy. It's all about one word. It's all about money. The current property owners could put in place a mixed-use development that the planning board, and I think most of us here, would be encouraged to see. The reason they haven't, the presumption is, it is unprofitable for them to do so. So the planning board has eased a lot of the restrictions: less green space, less parking, less affordable housing, higher heights, with the idea of incentivizing developers to go ahead. But even the chairman of the planning board says he doesn't know whether, in fact, that's going to happen. The fact is, the planning board, in two years with outside consultants, has done no economic analysis whatsoever about whether or not a development will or will not happen. There's no figure, there's no spreadsheet, there's nothing. It's quite possible that, in fact, after the proposal, no development will happen, because it's not profitable for them to do so. It's also quite profitable that if town meeting tonight votes in favor of this proposal, the landowners will make millions of dollars overnight, because now they can make a hugely profitable redevelopment. We just don't know. And I would suggest town meeting votes against the proposal until the planning board presents some idea about the underlying economics of this from the developer's perspective, which is the critical aspect of any planning board proposal.
Thank you. Mr. Collis, we'll go to microphone number one.
Hi, good evening. My name is Elizabeth Henry. I live at 149 Hubbard Street, right around the corner from these parcels. And I'll share that a concern about climate change informs my strong support for Article 33. As you heard, Massachusetts is facing a chronic housing shortage, driving up costs and displacing families. And we've seen that single-family housing development, when it can happen, is carving up our forests and our ecosystems and our landscapes for subdivision. And behind this housing shortage, a climate crisis is roiling out of control. And it is incumbent on communities across the Commonwealth, including Concord and across the world, to intentionally consider how we address both: how we build more housing and how we address the climate crisis. And this rezoning proposal may not be perfect, but it is a significant improvement over the status quo. I think we know that transit-oriented multifamily housing is one of the best tools we have to combat climate change, and I respectfully encourage you to vote yes.
Thank you very much. Let's return to the auditorium. Do you have speakers waiting, Ms. Flood?
I do. They keep appearing. The gentleman at the center, mic, please.
Hello, my name is Brad Hubbard Nelson. I live at 221 Machotic Road, and I'm speaking in favor of the proposal. I think the planning board's done a good job. Nothing is perfect. There's going to be issues with parking and traffic that already exist, in fact. But no matter what we do, Concord is going to change over time. And whether we like it or not, a lot of people are worried about the town character. I would say that the character of the Thoreau District right now is lacking a few things. There's empty storefronts there. There's something that's not getting built that could. But what really gets me is the changes I've seen over years since we've been here is how expensive this town is, just lots of big mansions being built in different places. This transit-oriented development can address that. I mean, we need -- if I think about town character, I was talking to my son about it, what I don't like about the town character is it's homogeneous and it's becoming more and more wealthy people can move in. I would love to see different sorts of people with different means be able to live in our neighborhood. And so that's why I'm in favor of this proposal.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we're over an hour now, and I'm just going to take a straw poll here. How many of you have already made up your mind how you're going to vote? How's it look in the auditorium, Ms. Flood, for how many people have made up their minds?
I would say over 90%.
How many of you have not yet made up your mind how you're going to vote? Okay, so we got about a dozen people in here who haven't decided yet, and how about in the auditorium?
About the same.
All right. So let's just keep that in mind as we continue with our remarks. We'll go to the next speaker in the auditorium.
Hi, Rosa Halliwell, 19 Sudbury Road and formerly in the '60s and '70s on the other side of the Thoreau District on Southfield. I just want to add in, I think we should keep it historic. This area in the 1940s, there was a huge uproar, because tons of two-family houses were built for returning GIs. Oh, my! In the 1960s, my family moved into an unexpanded Cape that was on a former farm. They were eyesores. They were boring. They were cookie-cutter. They were just as ugly as the A&amp;P that I rode my bike to to buy cat food, which is still there with Crosby's in it. You know, this is the neighborhood that has gotten more congested, and it will, and that's okay. That's who we are, and we need to stick with it. Historically, we are an open, progressive town, and we need to stick to our history. And if it looks a little different, that's historical, too.
Thank you very much. One more speaker in the auditorium, and we'll return to the gymnasium.
That will be you, please.
Hi there. My name is Michelle Flem, 324 Sudbury Road. What I wanted to say to all of you tonight is that these are really laudable goals, and I do applaud the planning board for making some changes. But the reality is, in our neighborhood, the infrastructure to absorb 10, 20, 60, 100 more people just isn't there. I'm not just talking about roads. I'm talking about the very basis of the kind of community that you want to create, a community where -- why I moved here: to be able to work from home, be able to walk to everything. That's why I live where I live. But again, the infrastructure is not there. What am I talking about? I'll give you one example: cell phones. Ask us about cellphone service in Concord Center. There is only one cellphone tower, and it's a mile and a half away from my house, or maybe a mile. What does that mean? That means that every day, when I get up and I want to do my day, my phone calls get dropped. If I'm in town, and I have no peace of mind that I could even call the police and my phone call not get dropped, let alone if my mom is in the ER and I can talk to her doctors about a decision. So what I'm asking you tonight here is to think about, yes, maybe a pause, so that we can put the infrastructure in place for these new people, these new families. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll return now to the auditorium, I'm sorry, to the gymnasium, and we'll start over here at microphone number one.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Prashir Patel, 397 Sudbury Road. I'm a member of the FinCom, but speaking for myself. It's not possible for me to support Article 33 tonight. I'm all in favor of actually voting no today and having the opportunity to make a data-driven decision. There's a couple areas where it would be helpful for us to understand the trade-offs of what we're voting for or against. Traffic is one thing. There's been no study done. The planning board says it's not possible to do that, but however, I think it's possible using the hypothetical scenario that they posed to say, well, what would the traffic look like, using these assumptions? Do some sensitivity analysis. Tell us what may or may not would happen and what mitigation strategies we can expect. And then on town finances, are we going to get enough tax revenue, presumably from improved commercial properties, to offset the potential costs for additional kids and housing and other such impacts on town finances? That hasn't been done either and considered at all either. So I'd recommend that we do these types of analyses, plus the economic development analysis that somebody else had mentioned earlier. Take the time to do that. Come back at next town meeting, not five years from now, not 10 years from now, but come back any year with some additional data so we can make a data-driven decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Flynn, I think you've been collecting a couple of comments that you want to make, but please be brief.
Yeah, just on one, on the traffic point, because I think a lot of people fear up to, you know, 16 homes put onto the Crosby's parcels, that that would make the -- could take the traffic from bad to extreme. So we didn't do a traffic study, because traffic studies are done as part of site plan review. They're paid for by the applicants. They look at the existing amount of cars on the road and the level of service, if there was an incremental change by adding cars. What we can do is what the traffic engineers calculate, the increase in trips onto those Crosby's parcels, if you did a full build-out, as I showed, under that hypothetical. So let's say it's 60 units of housing. Today, there's about a calculated 1,500 trips onto the Crosby's parcel, 60 units of -- excuse me, 60 additional housing units would generate 200 trips. So a 13% increase of cars coming on and off that parcel, that's not a 13% increase in traffic, because, of course, not everybody on Sudbury Road is going onto the Crosby's parcel. So I actually went out there and I sat for a couple hours and I counted cars, but I am not an engineer. So I would guess about 25% of the cars, on average, that go down Sudbury Road, which was higher than I was expecting, go into the Crosby's parcels. So 25% of 13%. So 25% of 13%, you get about a 3 and 1/4% increase. Appreciate these are back-of-the-envelope calculations. Does that mean traffic will go from, I mean, I drove through that intersection four times this afternoon, just driving around the area. Most of the time, I went straight through the lights, but I bet sometimes it gets a failing grade for level of service. I know it gets a failing grade sometimes for a level of service. Would that increase, right? Or would there be other changes that might mitigate it? When Brookside Square went into West Concord, that was 74 units of housing. But as part of that project, they replumbed Beherel Street, so that now there's a back entrance to the commuter rail parking. They're also, are funding pedestrian safety improvements because we're getting a complete street rebuild of Commonwealth Ave going through the middle. So there's improvements that are coming with that, but yes, more houses with more traffic trips. Is it net worse, net better? It's hard to say, which is maybe the point, that it's not really noticeable what those 74 units did to West Concord traffic, which has the exact same issues with the train track and the backup from the commuting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go to microphone number two.
Lois Wassoff, 258 Sudbury Road. I'm a 30-year resident of Concord. I actually am on the Finance Committee, but I'm speaking for myself. Just to reply to something that you just said, that's not an accurate comparison. The Sudbury, the Crosby's lot is bounded by wetlands and the train. There's really only way, one way in or out onto Sudbury Road, and I can't tell you the number of times I've seen the traffic backing up to block all of the entrances into Crosby's. What I wanted to say specifically is that opposing Article 33 is not opposing multi-use housing, it's not opposing denser development. I chose to live in a denser part of Concord that's walkable to the center. It's not any of that. It's opposing Article 33. I really hope that next year at town meeting, the planning board presents an article that incorporates the concerns that have been expressed, that is backed by the kind of studies and specific data that we've been talking about. Because I'd like to speak in support of an article that builds, that incentivizes the building of multifamily dwellings in the area. But I can't, because the article as it is proposed is excessively dense and overbuilds the area.
Okay, you'll have to wrap it up. Thank you very much. Just a reminder, everyone, you can see your timer on the screen. And when you're running out of time, it changes to red, so try and keep an eye on it. We'll go next to microphone number three.
Hi, I'm Emily Drazen. I live in Belknap Street, 197. So this is my neighborhood. I live in this neighborhood, the Thoreau District neighborhood. And I'm, first of all, I'm not all that concerned about traffic changes with this plan. I spend a lot of time in West Concord. I don't think that Brookside Square has done a big change to West Concord. I'm not worried about that. And I have little children who walk into, they're gonna do a lot of walking onto Thoreau Street. I'm not worried about the traffic. I think we have a responsibility to find ways to build smart development, and I think that we are at risk of killing this plan because we're looking for the perfect at the risk of the good. I have a dad who would like to move to Concord to be close to his grandchildren, and there's nowhere for him to go. He wants to live in a small, he wants to downsize. He wants to live in a small place. He doesn't want to live in a big mansion. He wants to live somewhere small, somewhere walkable. And there's nowhere for him in Concord. And I agree that design guidelines are important. I think, I love our town. But this plan does have design guidelines that aren't currently there. If we don't do this, something else could happen. I think that that's important. And I think everyone's, people keep talking about the open space that's there already or the green space, and I wonder, where is that? I mean, I walk my three children to Crosby's. I dare any of you to walk my three-year-old across that Crosby's parking lot. It's terrifying. There's no, it's not safe. It's not green. I take my kids to Bedford Farms for ice cream. You have to sit on the stairs of 80 Thoreau to eat your ice cream cone. There's nowhere common that I would think of as open space currently in our neighborhood there.
Thank you very much.
So I vote yes.
Let's return to the auditorium.
That would be you. Center, mic.
Hi, Ellie Garvey, 25 Damon Street. And I'd like to call the question, please.
All right. Calling the question, I do think that we have been discussing this long enough, that this is an appropriate motion, and it's non-debatable, and it requires a 2/3s vote to pass. This is a motion that would end debate and take us to a vote on the article. All those in favor of calling the question and going to a vote, please raise your ballots. Thank you very much. All those opposed, that clearly passes by well more than 2/3s in the gymnasium. How about in the auditorium, Ms. Flood?
I believe it is unanimous.
Believe it is unanimous? Okay. We will then proceed to a vote. And I'm gonna remind you that I'm gonna take this vote two ways. And that could mean, well, it could mean that we need to do a count, but we'll see what happens. All right. All those in favor of Article 33, please raise your voting slips. Thank you very much. All those opposed? Okay. Ms. Flood, how does that look in the auditorium?
It fails on the majority. I think I would have to count if it were to, on the 2/3s question.
All right. We're gonna count the vote. Tellers to your stations, and let's close the doors, please. And we'll count this vote, and we'll see what we have. We're counting the vote because I can't call it visually.
Oh, in this room?
Both rooms. Yeah.
She said it failed on the majority.
No, she thought it passed on the majority, but we need to do it both ways anyway, majority. I can't call it here. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of Article 3, please stand and raise your ballot. Mr. Fisher, are we ready for the opposing vote?
We are ready in the gymnasium.
Ms. Flood, are we ready in the auditorium for the opposing vote?
Yes, I believe so.
All right. Would all those opposed to Article 33, please stand and raise your ballot, your voting slip.
I am, I'm having a lot of trouble hearing, especially the playing board.
Yeah, well, I think it's fuzzy, it's not, it's the lack of clarity.
Unfortunately, that's...
Well, last night, I had like this airbrush that I put here with a wire, and you have like a button.
I do not know.
Really?
Yeah, somebody came and brought two.
Yeah, and I used that all night, it was great.
It was wireless. It was wireless. She liked it, and me, having...
She's wearing that.
And that, I couldn't handle, but I, and I don't have as much experience in that.
The recommendation of Chris Perdini and stuff, so that's...
For next time. She works for the town, she knows who's a mess. I don't know, I think somebody must have had to...
I don't see it.
I don't see it.
Okay, we've completed the count, and the vote was three hundred and five votes in favor and three hundred and sixty-six votes against Article 33, so the article fails by a majority vote, and it also fails by two-thirds. And we'll now proceed to, let's see. I have no motion under Article 35, and I therefore declare that the meeting is taking no action on Article 35, and we'll proceed to Article 36, and we'll hear from Ms. Ackerman. Now, those of you who are departing, we still have a meeting going on here, and it would be greatly appreciated if you were quiet, and by the way, there's lots of interesting stuff to talk about if you want to stay. Okay, so the motion is that Ms. Ackerman moves that the town adopt the provision of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 53, Section 18B, which would allow the town to provide Concord voters with information related to ballot questions. May I have a second for the motion? I see that there is one, thank you very much. We're waiting for Ms. Ackerman's PowerPoint, there it is.
Good evening, Terry Ackerman, 89 Heesbridge Road, and I am on the Select Board. Tonight, we are considering Article 36. Why do we want to vote for this? Because by law, the language of ballot questions has to be limited. There are no explanations allowed about the benefits of a project, the tax increase, or any other explanation on the ballot, and election workers are not allowed to answer any questions that people may have about the content. If we vote for this article, we accept Mass. General Law, Chapter 53, Section 18B, and that's it. We don't have to wait for the legislature to come back or anything, and it would allow us to add explanations, including pros and cons, for each ballot question. Voters would receive a summary explanation in the mail, and at the polls, there would be handouts and/or posters on the wall. The mailing might remind people that an election is coming up. For example, at this town meeting, Article 22, we voted to exempt debt for the high school access road, but that election is not coming up until September. By then, some of us will probably have forgotten what that ballot question is all about, so it would be great to get that mailing. Next slide, please. What would be included is a full text of each question, a fair and concise summary of each question, the pro arguments, 150 words or less, and the con arguments, 150 words or less, one sentence explaining the impact of a yes vote, and one sentence explaining the impact of a no vote. This information would be mailed to every voting household and available at the polls. The cost is estimated at about $2,400 for a one-ballot election. Next slide, please. This is just a sample of how they do it in Burlington. This is one side of the postcard and/or the envelope for the flyer, and next slide, probably looks really familiar, this is what we get for a statewide referendum. One side is the 150 words or less for the yes, and the other side for no. Next slide, please. So just to sum up, this is the timetable, the Select Board would vote. If the Select Board votes, that a question appears on the ballot, the Board notifies the town clerk, then the proponents and opponents are asked to submit written arguments. Those arguments are sent to the Select Board, and at least seven days before the election, they are mailed to the households. We urge your support for Article 36, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ackerman. We'll now open the floor to questions and comments on Article 36. Microphone number three, one, sorry.
Yeah, number one. Sven Weber, 50 Burnham. I really appreciate transparency, but as usual, the question is, who is, in the end, writing these sentences, and who's selecting what appears in pro and con? And that is a major challenge, from my perspective.
Ms. Ackerman, you want to give us the answer to that?
Sure, so, the law states that Town Council would put together, from the proponents and the opponents, and to figure out who they are, you look at, if there's a ballot question committee, it could be a finance committee, it could be the school committee, it could be a petitioner of an article, it depends who is proposing the article, and then those people are asked to write the 150-word summaries.
I think the Town Council may have some, a word of explanation to add.
Just to add to what Ms. Ackerman said, in most ballot initiatives, state law allows campaign committees, just as in any other campaign, and so a yes organization and a no organization is typically formed for most ballots, and that's who Town Council is supposed to obtain the comments from, if they're not obvious. We would work with the Select Board to figure out who might be proper representatives.
Thank you very much, microphone number one.
Madam Moderator, George Grett, 148 Peter Spring Road. Did I miss the second for this motion?
You did not, actually, you did, we do have a second, thank you. Ms. Flood, do we have anyone in the auditorium who would like to speak to Article 36?
I do not see anybody at a microphone here.
All right, looks like we're ready for a vote on Article 36. This is a simple majority, all those in favor, please raise your voting slips. Thank you very much, all those opposed. Okay, that is, it passes in the gymnasium by well more than a majority, and how about in the auditorium, Ms. Flood?
Nearly, but quite, not quite unanimous.
Not quite unanimous, okay. All right, so Article 36 passes by well more than a majority, and I do so declare. We'll now move to Article 37, which is a citizen petition, and this citizen petition is moved as printed in a handout, you should all have picked up the handout, out in the materials, on the materials tables, and could we please have a second for the motion? I see that we have one, thank you very much, and we will hear from petitioner, Mr. Stein.
Madam Moderator, thank you very much. Joseph Stein, 21 Thoreau Street. Next slide, please. I'll be talking today about Article 37, which is to authorize the Select Board to petition, to impose a checkout bag charge. Next slide. Article 37 would authorize the Select Board to petition the state for a special law requiring that retail establishments in Concord charge a minimum of 10 cents for each new checkout bag distributed, and any money collected for the bags would be retained by the retailer. Next slide. The purpose of this article is fourfold. One, to incentivize consumers to reuse checkout bags, the most sustainable and economical option. Two, to encourage consumers to decide if a bag is needed, and if not, to save money. Three, to allow collected money to be retained by the retailer to defray the costs of bags. And four, to reduce waste and disposal and recycling costs borne by the town. Next slide. Article 37 is identical to articles passed last year at town meetings for both Lincoln and Sudbury, and the goal for this article is really to build upon their success. Next slide. I believe this is good for the environment. Studies show that when consumers receive free checkout bags, they generally treat them as disposable. Bag reuse is the best option, as environmental costs are spread across multiple uses, and studies also show that even a nominal charge can impact human behavior. Next slide. For example, a 10-cent bag charge experiment in Los Angeles County almost 10 years ago resulted in a significant increase in the reusable bag use from 5% to 45%, and from 17% to 40% for no bag use, so even a small incidental charge can induce significant human behavior. Next slide. I believe this is good for residents. We're already paying for bags, and this just allows shoppers to save money by reusing bags, and reduced demand for new bags, I believe reduces town disposal and recycling costs, which are ultimately borne through taxes. Next slide. I also believe this is good for business. Checkout bags increase overhead, which is a charge that, the charge could help defray these costs. It helps level the playing field with local retailers, and helps stores switch to the most sustainable options. It has broad support by the Massachusetts Food Association, and I believe it allows for new sales opportunities, such as branded, reusable bags, et cetera. Next slide. Why now? In addition to a growing environmental crisis, we're in a period of rising costs that are starting to eat into the margins of local retailers. We have support by large retailers in town, including Crosby's, Concord Market Endeavors, as well as the Concord Select Board and the League of Women Voters. There's still no statewide regulation, and until there is, I believe it's important for towns like Concord to show leadership in this area. Next slide. How would it work? At point of sale, retailers would simply ask if you want a bag. Purchased bags treated, would be treated like any other item, they'd be listed on the receipt, subject to Massachusetts tax. The money collected would remain with the retailer, and the charge would apply to any bag material. Next slide. The same exemptions would apply as the Lincoln and Sudbury articles, and include bags in which loose products are placed by the consumer to bring to checkout areas, small non-handled bags or sleeves, like medication bags from CVS, and non-handled dry cleaning bags. Next slide. A bag charge has been successfully implemented in several Massachusetts cities, with no impact to the local economy, including Boston, Cambridge, and Newton. It's implemented in other cities across the country, statewide in California, Maine, Vermont, and in several European countries, some for over 20 years. Next slide. And finally, you know, I believe it's ultimately the voters here to decide if this actually makes sense for the town, but I truly believe this is a triple win. It's a win for the environment, a win for the residents, and a win for businesses. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As Mr. Stein mentioned, the Select Board recommends affirmative action on Article 37, and we'll now open the floor for questions and comments, and we're going back to our two-minute time limit here with this new article. Microphone number one.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and glad to have two minutes. Tom Doherty, 238 Peter Spring Road. I have no doubt this will pass, but as I think about how we make decisions here at town meeting, too often, something just sounds like a good idea, and we quickly all put our yellow cards up, or yesterday, our pink cards up, and say yes. What I have at my house is over 100 reusable bags that I don't know what to do with. They are from Athleta, they are from Free People, they are from all sorts of other places where my family shops, and they are going to eventually make their way to a landfill. Right now, what I do is, every time I go to St. Vincent de Paul or wherever to drop off some of my old clothing, I put them in a reusable bag, and then St. Vincent de Paul throws them away, so that I don't feel guilty about the fact that I put my reusable bag into the landfill. I'm not sure how we solve that problem, and I applaud this as an effort to reduce waste, but what I do with my paper Crosby's bags is I put other paper in it, the junk mail, the packaging, everything else, and then I put it out on the curb for Concord to recycle. The paper bags are actually part of the way in which I recycle better. Now, I don't mind paying a dime, I'm not sure why Crosby's needs an extra one of my dimes, if they want another dime, they can raise the cost of everything else. We could easily take that dime and apply it to something else. Like our friend, Article 33, which we spent so much time on, this might be a good idea, but I think there might even be a better way to do it. And so while I know it's going to pass, I'm going to vote no, in the hopes that perhaps we come back, think about it a little harder, and come to an even better solution for Concord. Thank you.
Thank you, microphone number two.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator, Nancy Teasdale, 42 Riverside Avenue.
Ms. Teasdale.
I have a couple of questions, combined with comments. So, question about the charge, has it been considered a charge versus a fee, and is one taxable and the other potentially not taxable? That's one question. I do think the quoted statement on the receipt is going to be too long for many receipts. Checkout bag charge, if you think about fitting it on a little tiny receipt, is longer than broccoli, for instance, and then the, echoing the previous speaker, I'm generally in favor, I think there are a lot of issues with the wording, and including forcing restaurants to charge a fee, when really, I think, most of us wouldn't be bringing a bag to a restaurant. I mean, maybe we should, but I think just as a practice, that's, you know, we've exempted restaurants from plastic bags, the plastic bag provision, I think we can do the same here.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stein, you may answer those questions.
Thank you, those are great questions. I don't know how to respond to the broccoli question, so maybe I'll pass on that. The first question you mentioned is a good one, the fee versus rebate. There was a study that was done, I actually have a slide in my deck that I can show you, but there was a study that was done by university professors that actually showed there was no, there was no change in human behavior when you offer a refund versus a charge, which is very interesting. So here's an example where a 5-cent checkout bag charge experiment was done in the DC area, and then it said, basically, the professor said, you know, while the tax decreased disposable bag use by over 40 percentage points, the bonus generated virtually no effect, so...
Mr. Stein, I believe the question was, is it a charge or a fee, and is it taxable? Hold on just a minute, is that, nod at me, is that your question? Was that your question? All right, turn microphone two back on.
Is there a difference, essentially, is there a difference between a charge and a fee, meaning a charge would be taxable, but potentially a fee not taxable, a fee more like a service, or is that, is one taxable and is there a way around it being taxed, I guess? If you tax it, it's now 11 cents, right?
Thank you very much. Mr. Stein, do you have the answer to that question?
The idea was just to treat it as any, any... The, the idea was just to treat it as any, any product that you would buy at a store, so it would be a taxable item.
Thank you very much. All right. Let's go back to microphone number one in the gymnasium, and then we'll go to the auditorium.
Swenbevo, 50 Bowne Street. Concord, welcome to the first 21st century. When I moved away from Germany 21 years ago, we had this in place for at least eight years then already, so it was a major success and reduced significantly the paper bags. And then I moved to California, and in 2014, California adopted it, and overnight, I could really see it, overnight, the paper, the, most of paper bags and the plastic bags went away, and people showed up as reusable, reusable bags. So just, if this is taxable or not, we're talking about one sense. If it fits the description on the receipt, okay, we will find the space or a provision. We will find a way to work around with it, but it's time. Yeah, welcome to the 21st century, and this is clear yes.
Thank you very much. Let's go to the auditorium.
Pamela Drit, 13 Concord Green. This increases our freedom and our information, and we'll do the right thing once we know what it is. I'm enthusiastically in favor.
Thank you very much. Do we have any more speakers in the auditorium?
No, there was just the one.
Thank you very much. We'll go back to microphone number one.
Kate McAnaney, 58 Walnut Street. 25 years ago, I went to Germany, and I tried to buy something at a store, and I didn't have a bag, and they were like, well, how are you going to get your stuff home then? And I had to make like a pouch like this and put the stuff in. I didn't make that mistake twice. I am somebody who wants to bring my reusable bags to the store. I often either forget them, or I don't expect to go to the store, and then I do, or I get much more than I expected. This will help me to behave the way I want to, and, because if you get there and every time, you're like, oh. I think it's great, I'm going to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no one else at a microphone, I think we are ready for a vote on Article 37. All those in favor, please raise your voting slips. Thank you very much. All those opposed.
Ms. Reese? Carmen, I have one person who came to the microphone just seconds before you called the vote.
Ah, all right. One more speaker. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, the evening's late, and I'll be brief. I'm Jim Nager, James Nager, I live at 75 Channing. We've lived in Concord for almost six years. I have to tell you, it's the sweetest place on earth. This, and this assemblage is part of the character of this town. When I moved here, Crosby's, and I use disposable bags, but I want to speak against this motion, Crosby's gave you a discount, they put the money ostensibly towards charity. I thought that was good and responsible. I brought in my disposable bags, as I do. During the pandemic, where I shop in another town where I do my major amount of shopping, would not let me use my disposable bags. Roach Brothers and Acton, I don't think I'm the only one who crosses a border to shop, wouldn't allow you to use it, under the, under the rule of unintended consequences. It's a good-hearted rule, but folks, we're nice people. If you want to use a bag, I don't think we need a law to dictate it, and thanks very much.
Okay. Anybody else?
Nope, we are, nobody standing at a microphone.
Okay. Now we're ready for a vote. All those in favor of Article 37, please raise your voting slips. Thank you very much. All those opposed? All right. The motion passes by a clear majority in the gymnasium. How about in the auditorium, Ms. Flood?
Likewise here.
Okay. The, the meeting has voted in favor of Article 37 by a clear majority, and I do so declare. Okay. We'll now move to Article 38, and we'll hear, this is a citizen petition, we'll hear from Mr. Banfield. The motion, which we'll see on the screen in just a moment, is that Mr. Banfield moves that the town urge the Concord Municipal Light Plant to develop an action plan and schedule for the achievement of the town's 2030 solar capacity targets focused on development of new power generation on town-owned properties, and present the plan and schedule to both the Select Board and the Finance Committee before the end of 2022. May we have a second for the motion? I see that we have one, and I'll note that the Select Board recommends affirmative action on Article 38, and we'll now hear from Mr. Banfield.
Dean Banfield, 73 Walden Terrace, and a member of the Finance Committee, but I'm moving this article in my capacity as an individual citizen.
Proceed.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Up, we're already one slide too far along. Can we back that all up? Thank you. At the outset, I'd like to focus on the main goal of Article 38. The objective here is to get the light plant back into the business of creating solar power on town properties. But to do this right, we need to step back and engage with the questions and challenges that are inherent in that process, and establish a plan that will allow us to reach or exceed our target. Next slide. So what exactly is our target? The Climate Action Plan says we should be at 20 megawatts of solar generation on town property by 2030. Today, we're about a third of the way there. Next slide. We began 12 years ago with a more aggressive target of 25 megawatts, and we made excellent progress until January of 2017, when the WR Grace Solar Array went live. But at the end of that year, the light plant deprioritized municipal solar development, and none has been developed since. The Climate Action Plan trimmed the original target to 20 megawatts, but even with this reduced goal, we will need to create between 1.5 and 2 megawatts per year to achieve our objective. Next slide, please. Adding more solar will not come without effort. The highest priority of the light plant is to provide reliable electric service at a reasonable price. Ratepayers should be able to anticipate stable electric rates with only modest increases over time. Creating more local solar will need to be done in the context of, next slide, please? There we go. We'll also need to be, let's see, where was I? Creating more local solar will need to be done in the context of rate service stability. We also need to be thoughtful about the current infrastructure of CMLP. The distribution system will need to manage the increased variability of solar power generation, so I don't want to minimize the need to work through the technical barriers that may exist. In addition, we should prioritize open sites and work to minimize impacts on the tree canopy. The plan developed should include a public process to review any plans to remove trees. When I review the work that's been done elsewhere, I'm encouraged that these kinds of challenges can be overcome with careful technical planning and appropriate financial analysis. That's why this article specifies a planning period for the remainder of 2022, with a review by the Select Board and the Finance Committee. Next slide, please. Touching briefly on the benefits of doing this, I've already mentioned the value of doing what we can to create the energy we consume, but there is an adjacent value at work here. The distributed nature of renewable power generation will help reduce the historical disparities between the places where power is produced and where it is consumed. As we electrify vehicles and buildings, our thirst for more electricity will keep growing, and that demand will strain the wider New England grid. Local solar helps to alleviate some of that stress, which translates into avoided costs. And once the financials are worked out, solar should slot in as a stable component of our electricity portfolio, not subject to the kind of price shocks for the 30 years which each array is expected to remain in service. Next slide, please. We are all aware of the growing number of extreme weather events. Ecosystem changes previously understood to take hundreds or thousands of years are being reduced to the length of a human lifetime. The Earth is not waiting until 2025 for Concord to open a new middle school, so we simply need to act with more urgency. We can help the state with its 3% annual renewables target and chip away at the highest component of the CMLP power portfolio. Next slide, please. To give a sense of scale, I'll, I'll close with a short list. We'll need to look at all of our public buildings and parking areas, and also look for another larger-scale site. So let's all commit to getting started today. Next slide. Please join me in voting yes on Article 38.
Thank you very much. Chris, can you leave that last slide up for just a moment, please? I just want to note that the motion that I read to you was an earlier version of the motion, and it did not include the last sentence, which says, "The plan should prioritize open sites and include a public process to evaluate any possible tree removal." So I just want to point out to you that that sentence is part of this motion. Okay. We'll now open the floor for questions and comments, and we'll go to microphone number three. And actually, hold on one second. Do we have? I think we have Wendy Rubelli from the Light Board. Yes, thank you very much. Come to the podium, please, Wendy. We'll hear from, from the Light, from the Light Board, and then we'll open the floor for questions and comments.
Good evening. Wendy Rubelli, 42 Bow Street. I'm Chair of the Light Board and speaking on behalf of the Board. The CML Board is fully in support of expanding solar on in-town property. The installation of solar is aligned with the light plant's obligation to supply clean electricity under Concord's energy goals, which aim to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and improve the community's resilience to the impact of climate change. The Light Board discussed this article in the context of understanding the steps that would be necessary to develop additional in-town solar to meet the goal of the 20 megawatts of generation. Among the items discussed were the interest in reviewing previous town studies, transmission and distribution, infrastructure, battery storage, grid capacity, and costs, both short-term capital as well as operating costs in the long term. The Board would expect to pursue a very transparent process and wants the community to understand the associated costs and barriers that may be involved in achieving these goals. As we outline the steps to achieve these goals, it may lead to additional authorizations at town meeting. However, the development of any plan would be the result of ongoing dialogue with the community, and we will welcome citizen participation in our monthly meetings where plan development issues and key issues are likely to be discussed. The CML Board recommends affirmative action on Article 38.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rubelli. And we'll now open the floor for questions and comments, and we'll start over here at microphone number three.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Joe Kuntz at 41 Maple Street. I'm going to urge a no vote on this because of what has been not, what has not been addressed in any of the, in the presentations so far. There's the matter of intermittency with solar energy, there's land use, I'm not sure how much more land this is going to take. There's the matter of waste created by solar panels, they only last about a generation, 20 to 30 years. They contain lead, cadmium, and other toxic chemicals. And there's also the matter of sourcing of the panels and the materials going into the panels, that, that hasn't been addressed either. I'd like to know where they're coming from. So at a minimum, I'd like, I'd like for these matters to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go to microphone number one.
Yes, Swenbevo, 50 Bowne Street. I would encourage a strong yes vote here. Everyone in, in the world and the universe is increasing their targets and speeding up, and not reducing targets and slowing down. Right now, the, the light plant is achieving its goals by buying credits. I always compare it like you're eating the hamburgers and pay someone else to eat the vegetables, and you claim you're, you're healthy. So I, I want to see an increase on renewable energy here locally in Concord, and, and not, let's say, in this example, paying someone to eat the vegetables. It's about time, and I hopefully would see in a future town meeting, an increase in targets and not a status quo. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Flood, I don't see anyone at a microphone in the auditorium. Is there anyone there?
There is. In fact, there are now two. They've been waiting, waiting patiently for other speakers.
Okay, terrific. Let's go to the auditorium.
I, send, okay. They're doing the, you go first, you go first.
Okay. I'll go first. Jerry Frankel, 132 Jenny Dugan Road, Chair of the Comprehensive Sustainability and Energy Committee, and I am speaking for the committee. The committee voted unanimously in support of this article. We urge affirmative action. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Pamela Drit, 13 Concord Green. I have a dream of a Concord in which we produce all the energy that we need locally, and it's cheap, so cheap it's nearly free. Once we've invested in the infrastructure for a distributed grid and electric buildings and electric transportation, we can have a better life and a cheaper life, and this is how we do it. I strongly urge us, and, and that's not a dream, that's actually technically possible right now. Please vote in favor.
Thank you very much. We'll return to the gymnasium and go to microphone number three.
Courtney Eaton, 141 Monson Road. I'm also the Chair of the Climate Action Advisory Board, and I'm here on behalf of the Board. We also voted unanimously to support this Article 38. We feel that it is in line with our Sustainable Concord Action Plan, and would help us to get towards our greenhouse goal mitigation and reduction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go to microphone number one.
Thanks, Jeff Collins, 55 Highland Street. I'll vote in favor of the, of the motion, and, but just wanted to point out that based on some work I do, we lose about, well, we've documented that Massachusetts loses about 5,000 to 6,000 acres of natural land to development every year, and estimates are a quarter of that is due to ground-mounted solar arrays. So it's important that we increase the amount of solar, but that we get that off the ground. And so we've mentioned, a couple people have mentioned, that there'll be necessary investments to, to meet these goals. I think we should all be prepared to make those additional investments, to invest in rooftop and canopy solar arrays versus green field or certainly forest removal for, for solar development. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we'll go to microphone number one again.
My name is Brad Dai. I live at 1019 Main Street. I hope that the article passes. I think it's very important that we have clarity in town about the precise intentions that we have about local solar generation. I'm so happy that, that the petitioner brought this forward. Something a previous speaker mentioned that came up, that might be not exactly within the four corners of solar, but I think is very important to talk about, well, which just mentioned, the previous speaker mentioned, the concept of grid storage and, and microgrids, which I interpret to be geothermal microgrids. I would very strongly like to urge CMLP and the Light Board to take very seriously the same kind of planning and clear articulation of its future intentions regarding that issue as well. I sincerely want to be able to purchase my heating and cooling needs from CMLP in a distributed microgrid, and not from a methane company. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone waiting at a microphone in the auditorium?
We do not.
Okay. Looks like we're ready for a vote on Article 38. All those in favor, please raise your voting slips. Thank you very much. All those opposed? Thank you. And the, the motion passes by an overwhelming majority in the gymnasium. How about in the auditorium, Ms. Flood?
If not unanimous, here, very close to it.
All right. And the meeting has voted affirmatively on Article 38 by an overwhelming majority, and I do so declare. Okay. Now, we have addressed Articles 39, 40, 41. Now, we have addressed Articles 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, and 44 on the consent calendar, and we will now proceed to Article 45. Article 45 is the BD Swim and Fitness Center Enterprise Fund expenditures, and we'll see the numbers and the motion on the screen in just a moment. And the Finance Committee and the Select Board both recommend affirmative action on Article 45. And we will hear from Anna McKeon. Am I pronouncing your name correctly?
Close, McEwen.
McEwen. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Hello, everybody. My name is Anna McEwen. I'm the Recreation Director, here to present on Article 45. Next slide, please. The BD Center opened on April 18, 2006. It was constructed for approximately $11 million, made possible by a $6 million gift from the Alfred Sawyer Trust, a $1.8 million gift from the BD family, as well as many generous contributions from the community. The Recreation Department runs the BD Center as an enterprise fund in accordance with Article 30 of the 2005 Annual Town Meeting. We work hard to balance the recreational needs of the community with our obligation to run a financially self-supporting operation without taxpayer support. The only aspect of the entire recreation operation that is paid for by the general fund is the Recreation Director's salary. For all other expenses, from staffing to facility maintenance, the BD Center must cover on its own. Next slide, please. BD celebrated its 16th anniversary this April. A staple in the community, the center has faced its fair share of challenges, but has remained consistent in its goal to serve as Concord's premier swim and fitness facility. The BD Center is home to the CCHS swim team, 200-plus youth otter swim team athletes, and dozens of fitness clients. Excuse me. This year to date alone, we've provided over 2,000 kids with swimming lessons, 70% of which are residents. Did you know that CCHS has more high school All-American divers than any other high school in the state? Much of that is in thanks to the equipment that we have at the BD Center. We welcome well over 500 people into our facility daily, even more if there's an event or a swim meet. We collaborate with the Fire Department for swim testing, the Library for Youth Programming, the High School for Lifeguard Training Classes. BD hosts the town's annual trunk-or-treat event and the egg hunt, and proudly hosts the Nick Ressler Blood Drive. The BD Center is truly Concord's swim and fitness facility. Next slide, please. This slide shows our revised FY '22 numbers, which are not audited but are a better-advised projection now that a good portion of the fiscal year has passed. We are projecting a revised deficit of negative $410,000 instead of the original projection of negative 497. Next slide, please. The last two years have been anything but easy for the recreation industry. Our operation depends on people wanting to come together to socialize, swim, play, and exercise, and the uncertainty of the pandemic has kept people away. Thanks to the efforts of the recreation staff and the commitment of many members, the BD Center has made it through what we believe to be the worst of the pandemic. People are ready to commit time and energy to their health and wellness again, and the BD Center is ready to receive them. While we are seeing membership numbers return to pre-pandemic quantities, rising personnel costs, increased purchase services, and other inflationary pressures continue to strain the fund balance, the systems necessary to keep our pools and facility in operation are required to run 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. The overhead is substantial, and the ability to make adjustments during off-hours is minimal. As we move into FY '23, we are projecting a deficit of negative $552,000, which will be offset by drawing on the fund. Next slide, please. FY '23 operating revenues are projected to be about $1.7 million, which is about a $200,000 increase from our revised FY '22 numbers. Current trends suggest that people are ready to return to programming, and we've set our revenue numbers to reflect that. We have seen a steady return of memberships in FY '22 and estimate that around 75% of those that canceled due to the pandemic have returned. Next slide, please. Looking at our current reoccurring membership data, we are seeing the highest levels of membership in various categories since FY '20, and in some areas, we are exceeding quantities from FY '19 and earlier. To date, our top reoccurring membership categories are family memberships, adult memberships, and 65-plus memberships. We have highlighted over the last few years that family memberships were declining. We've worked hard to bring those folks back. These numbers show the fruits of that labor. Our various membership categories are available for purchase by residents and non-residents, with about 70% of our current members being residents. Next slide, please. Our operating expenditures in FY '23 are proposed to be $2.2 million, an increase of about $230,000 from revised FY '22 numbers. Personnel services continue to be our largest expense, as the BD Center has 19.12 FTEs. Driving factors behind the $165,000 jump include minimum wage increases, more programs, and fully-staffed operations. The second-largest expense is general purpose, which includes our purchase services, such as electricity, sewer, water, banking, as well as our contracted custodial services. A large portion of our energy expenditure goes towards running our dehumidification systems, as well as the pools, pumps, and motors. It's expensive to run a pool, especially inside and in New England. Even when the building is closed, the pool motors, filters, HVAC systems, and pumps are running. Next slide, please. In summary, we are projecting a fund balance to end at about $2.4 million in FY '23, a reduction of $194,000 from revised FY '22 projections. The town has advised us to have six months of operations in our reserves, and we currently have double that. Our fund balance is healthy, and it can afford to bridge the gap as we make our way back to pre-pandemic numbers. To reiterate again, the BD Center is a community asset that does not affect your tax dollars. Next slide, please. As we move into FY '23, we are proactively looking at ways we can better position the center to be financially sustaining. We will continue to work closely with the Recreation Commission, Finance Committee, and Town Manager's Office to explore all angles to assure that the BD Center is here for years to come. Thank you. Next slide.
Thanks very much. Let's leave that motion there for just a moment, so everyone can have a good look at it. And could we have a second for the motion, please? Thank you very much. Okay. We'll now open the floor for questions and comments, if there are any.
I have one speaker.
I see that we have a speaker in the auditorium. Let's go there. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Pamela Dritt, 13 Concord Green. I want to know if there are any plans to explore adding solar with battery backup as a means of reducing the operating costs of the BD Center and making everything better.
Ms. McEwen? Thank you for the question. Yes, we would like to explore the opportunity for solar. The building is not currently solar-ready, but that is something that we would look to explore in the future.
Thank you very much. We'll return to the gymnasium, and we'll go to microphone number one.
Hi, I'm Chris Reynolds, Chair of the Finance Committee, and I'm speaking in that capacity. So when you look at the losses, and at the hearing, we had a similar discussion on this topic. So you have about $2.3 million in remaining endowment. So I have two questions. So one, endowments typically have a use formula associated with them, so that you can apply certain of the endowment, but not all of it. So are you able to apply all the losses against the endowment?
Currently, yes.
At some point, does that change?
That'd be a larger question for the Finance Department, but as far as I understand, no. We are just going to target that six-month reserve.
Okay. So even though it's an endowment, you can eat through the principal, is what you're telling me?
Looks like we have the interim Town Manager coming to help out with this question.
Sure. So it's fund balance. It's not an endowment?
Okay. Great.
And then, secondly, what would be the plan to the extent that membership does not come back? So at some point, will the town have to consider sustaining or subsidizing BD?
Sure. Thanks for the question. We aren't taking anything off the table at this point, and we recognize that we would need to have a larger community conversation about the future of the BD Center if we continue to see trends as we did the last two years. What we're seeing in FY '22 and pulling into FY '23 is certainly promising, but we recognize that we would need to have a conversation with multiple parties to look at as many options as we possibly could, which may or may not include a subsidy. I can't speak to that. We haven't had those sorts of discussions yet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Ms. Flood, do we have anyone in the auditorium who has a question or a comment?
No further questions that I can see.
Looks like we're ready for a vote on Article 45. All those in favor of Article 45, please raise your voting slips. Thank you very much. All those opposed? All right. That motion passes in the gymnasium by a substantial majority. How about in the auditorium, Ms. Flood?
The same in the auditorium.
All right. The meeting has acted affirmatively on Article 45 by a substantial majority, and I do so Okay. We'll now proceed to Article 46. Article 46 is moved on a handout, I believe. Yes, Article 46 is moved on a handout, which you should have from the Materials Table. And I would like to have a second for the motion, please. I see that we have one. And we'll hear from Mr. Posner.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Would you please bring up the first slide? Good evening. Concord Town Meeting. Hopefully, you are all still hanging in there. It's been a long night. My name is Philip Posner. I live at 223 Laws Brook Road in West Concord. I'm a member of the Transportation Committee, but I'm speaking on my own behalf tonight. I ask that the town meeting vote to approve Article 46 as it's printed in the handout. Before really getting started, I wanted to express my thanks to the many people in and out of town government and who have attended various town meetings and hearings over the last several months, who have offered support, constructive criticism, asked hard questions, engaged with me on funding this article. All of you have made the language I am advancing tonight a better reflection of Concord's values. Thank you. Town meeting voters, as you consider this article, I ask you to keep three important ideas in mind: connectivity, sustainability, and accessibility. Each idea, connectivity, sustainability, and accessibility, explains why multi-use trails like the Reformatory Branch Trail are important for our community and for our Commonwealth. Can you bring up the next slide, please? The Reformatory Branch of the Middlesex Central Railroad was built to connect Cambridge to Bedford and then to Concord more than 130 years ago. The railroad hauled freight and people. It connected communities in the way that people did that in the 19th century. The railroad line ran directly through wetlands and lowlands, we now call Great Meadows Wildlife Sanctuary, as well as the neighborhoods east of Concord Center. At that time, there was no accommodation for wildlife habitat. Railroads didn't do that in those days. The RBT isn't a natural feature, but of course, it provides us with access to nature, and it connects neighborhoods and communities. Next slide, please. Why are multi-use trails like the RBT important? Well-designed multi-use trails are equitable, inclusive, welcoming, and they serve people with varying abilities. Multi-use trails provide a safe and emission-free alternative to car transportation. Trails provide physical fitness and give opportunities for healthy lifestyles, and trails strengthen local economies, as demonstrated by information provided us by the Commonwealth. Please move to the next slide. So what's the problem? Right now, trail conditions are simply inadequate for many users. Those of you who use the RBT know it can be muddy and pocked with puddles for days after it rains. There are muddy slopes that can deter schoolkids from riding their bikes to school. In places, trail conditions can be tough for older people, folks with mobility challenges, moms with strollers, or people who might ride their bikes to shop or get to work in Concord Center. Concord has over 100 miles of walking trails and paths, but the RBT is different. It's not a woods trail cut through hill and dale. It's a railroad right-of-way, built with 19th-century priorities in mind. Folks, we are living in the second decade of the 21st century, not the 19th century, not the 1950s, not even 1995. We need to create new ways to get around that don't always involve jumping into our cars for short trips to town, and we need to start taking action now. Multi-use trails encourage sustainability, and they promote happiness. You never see a bad mood on one of these trails, and it's not a bad combination. Please move to the next slide. In order for the RBT to serve our whole community, to provide connectivity, sustainability, and accessibility, those portions of the trail that are inaccessible need some help through thoughtful study and community input. If we decide, "Let's fix what's broke, but no paving," no problem. Let's go in that direction. A vote for Article 46 is not a vote for paving. Article 46 is a vote for planning. The Envision Concord 2030 Study recommended a multimodal transportation system for Concord. The 2020 Climate Action Plan called for, quote, "providing accessibility and connections between bicycling and walking paths," unquote. State and federal policies support planning and creating great multi-use trails that promote all of our values, wildlife habitat included. For example, the town of Stowe, Mass. just got $750,000 in federal funding to study improving track road as a multi-use trail. That's the trail that is right next to the Assabet River Wildlife Sanctuary. Move to the next slide. As a town, we've done great planning with creativity, common sense, and respect for one another. Article 46 would bring together planners, biologists, engineers, town staff, neighbors, residents from the entire town of all ages and abilities to talk about how this resource can be preserved, improved, and maintained for our future. Recently, Congress passed and the President signed the Bipartisan Infrastructure Bill to deliver billions of dollars for transportation and related improvements, improvements which specifically include planning and creating great multi-use trails throughout the entire country. Article 46 recommends that our staff go out and get some of that money. Get the money. Start the process. Vote for Article 46. Thanks for hanging in there this evening, folks, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Posner. I want to note that the motion under Article 46 is a motion to recommend to the Select Board the allocation of $75,000 of such funds as may be made available to the town from the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, and the study is described. I believe we'll hear from Ms. Bates on behalf of the Select Board, and I've been asked to announce that both the Natural Resources Commission and the Trails Committee recommend no action on Article 46.
Madam Moderator, the Select Board recommends affirmative action on Article 46 as shown in the motion. Rather than appropriating funds at this town meeting, this motion recommends that the Select Board allocate $75,000 to perform a study using funds we expect will become available to the town from the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs will become available to the town from the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. This article has not yet gone through the usual process for capital projects. This year, the rigorous process resulted in many worthy municipal projects, paving, sidewalks, et cetera, being cut or underfunded. It's difficult to know where this project would have ranked if evaluated along with the other capital needs. The free cash balance, another possible source of funding, is lower than it has been in several years due to contributions to the middle school project Sustainability Fund, affordable housing, and other worthy expenditures voted by past town meetings. The type of feasibility to be done on the Reformatory Branch Trail needs more discussion and public input, perhaps in the context of reviewing the entire town trail system.
Thank you very much. We'll now open the floor for questions and comments. We'll start in the gymnasium, and we'll start at microphone number one.
Thank you. My name is Anne Marie Altman, two forty-seven Laws Brook Road. I'm a regular user of this trail and find it lovely.
Could you step a little bit closer to the microphone for us? Thank you.
I'm a regular user of the trail and very much enjoy it. I have a question. It's my understanding that the town of Bedford has voted down their piece of improving the trail. Now, our trail goes from Concord into Bedford and meets up with the Minuteman Trail eventually, and it seems to me, if that's indeed true, that Bedford is not doing anything about it at the moment. I don't see the point of Concord spending seventy-five thousand dollars and getting into expanding our trail when it stops at Route sixty-two. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Microphone number two.
Mike Lilley, sixty-eight Cambridge Turnpike. The Reformatory Trail is beautiful as it is. I can't imagine spending any money to change it. It's wonderful. Having biked the trail from Concord through Bedford down to Arlington and Cambridge, you know, Lexington, the Minuteman Trail is fine, but it should not, like, the Reformatory Trail should not become the Minuteman Trail. They're different things. It's, it's, all the things about the trail being a place of nature and beauty, that shouldn't change. So don't change the Reformatory Trail. Don't fix what is not broken. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Microphone number three.
Ellen Quackenbush, two oh six Prairie Street.
Ms. Quackenbush.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article forty-six is just too narrow and assumes that the Reformatory Branch Trail is the only solution to what should be a townwide study of bike trail connectivity. Article forty-six requests seventy-five thousand, a seventy-five thousand dollar feasibility study of, quote-unquote, "graining and grading and drainage improvements along Reformatory Branch." Got this, "along Reformatory Branch." This charge means hiring a civil engineering firm with expertise in trail reconstruction, including surface type, width, and tree removal. The study will be funded by the Infrastructure and Jobs Act, tilting the outcome towards a large infrastructure project. The article's goal, I believe, is to convert the Reformatory Branch into a transportation corridor, connecting Minuteman Bike Way, one of the heaviest traffic bikeways in the state, through Bedford, past Great Meadows Wildlife Refuge to Lowell Road. The environmental price of routing high-speed bike traffic through Reformatory Branch is high. Dr. Brian Winmiller, Director of Field Conservation at Zoo New England, has spent twenty years working with Concord students, teachers, and citizens to restore the threatened Blanding turtle population at Great Meadows back to sustainable levels. During the eight weeks in late summer to early fall, juveniles cross Reformatory Branch from nesting sites in people's yards to Great Meadows. These guys are small, the size of a half-dollar in black. Even the most conscientious and careful cyclists find, would find them hard to see and to avoid. Simply put, high-speed bikes and turtles don't mix. Please join the Trails Committee and the NRC in voting no action. We need to step back and create a townwide bike study that is a better fit for the current and future transportation needs of Concord and our fragile ecosystems.
Thank you very much. We'll now go to the auditorium. I see speakers waiting there.
Yes, and I believe the one to my right was the first, and then you.
Laura Davis, three thirty Garfield Road. Like many of you here, I am deeply concerned about climate change, and here in Concord, thirty-one percent of our greenhouse gas emissions comes from transportation, and that's one of the reasons why my family made the choice to go down to one car and replace our second car with a cargo bike last summer. And that's a bike with a wide basket on the front so I can take my kid to school and pick up a load of groceries without a car. The Reformatory Branch Trail is not accessible to me, even though it's a straight shot from Concord Center to Bedford. The path is too rough and too narrow for my cargo bike. It's not even passable with my regular bike if it's muddy and icy and snowy. And so when I take my son to the playscape at Ripley or the urgent care center in Bedford or the shoe store in Lexington, all trips that I have done in the last three months, I put my four-year-old in the front of my bike, and I get on sixty-two, and that's how I go because I care about climate change. And so, as you can imagine, that's an uncomfortable situation for me to be in. I can't imagine the drivers like it either. I would like to be on a bike path. It would be safer for us. Addressing climate change is about saying no sometimes, but it's also about saying yes. It's about saying yes to projects that help everybody, parents, children, students, people of all ages and abilities, feel comfortable getting around this town without a car. And as evidenced by the fact that we voted down housing today because we don't have any transit infrastructure, this is an obvious choice for us. We need more safe places for people to cycle for transit. It's essential. It's essential for climate change. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll take the next speaker in line in the auditorium.
Dennis Sullivan, seventy-five Minuteman Drive here in Concord. Would you fund a study to put an airport in Concord Center? Would you fund a study to privatize the high school? Would you fund a study to do something that you knew you didn't want to do? Please do not fund a consulting company to investigate something that is fundamentally a bad idea. The Reformatory Branch Trail directly abuts Great Meadows National Wildlife Refuge, attracts families, seniors, and anyone who wants to spend time walking in nature and enjoying the woods. It's an excellent trail, built about a hundred and thirty years ago. It's a narrow-gauge railroad line. It was eventually abandoned and turned back to nature. The Reformatory Branch Trail already is a multi-use trail. It's a delightful biking trail if you want to leisurely bike through nature. It's not a great biking trail if you're trying to use it to commute to Cambridge or you want to bike fast. Go online. You'll see that Article forty-six is actually part of a plan to extend the high-speed Minuteman commuter bike way from Cambridge through Bedford to Concord. If you encourage Reformatory Branch Trails used for high-speed bicycle commuting to Cambridge, you'll eventually discover you're going to have to pave it over. Okay. Article forty-seven says the state of Massachusetts does not require the trail to be paved. I feel this is a gullibility test. If you proactively link this trail to other miles and miles of asphalt-paved trail, what do you think's eventually going to happen? Dirt or asphalt, the biggest problems on this trail are not the hazards, grade changes, and barriers that passage, uncomfortable and inaccessible to memory, as stated in the article. The biggest problems on the trail are people biking recklessly fast, and we're constantly jumping out of the way. A bike is flying away when we're on the trail. We've lived in a home that directly abuts the trail for over forty years. I biked, walked, cross-country skied, and snowshoed on this delightful nature trail, as have many thousands of others. I think that it's a fantastic, just as it is, not just because I live on it. Why spend taxpayer money to study possible fixes to something that's not broken? There's many other people that want to speak. I'm against Article forty-six because it may wreck a nature trail at the edge of my backyard, but also because it'll, its behind-the-scenes goals is to propose a fix to overflowing hazards, hoping that the study recommends Concord making this a high-speed trail. Finally.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You are over time. We'll take the next speaker in the auditorium. Fellow in the Beatty Center shirt.
Yes, Madam Moderator. The statement from the Select Board makes it abundantly clear that this proposal was not appropriately vetted. Oh, excuse me. Siragangelis, sixty-two Prescott Road.
Thank you.
Thank you. The statement from the Select Board makes it abundantly clear that this proposal was not vetted in our committees. The funding provided in the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act is actually available for a wide range of priorities that have already been vetted and discussed in Concord committees as things that we would like. For instance, maintenance of roads. I heard the Director of Department of Public Works saying that we're about a million dollars behind what we need just to maintain the roads in fair condition, and that if we don't invest more in that, we're going to have to spend exponentially more to rebuild them once they deteriorate. Other priorities that would be eligible for funding include electric busing for schools, development of public transportation, transportation safety like we need in West Concord, as well as electric charging stations in Concord Center. Town meeting is now being asked, on the basis of a six- or seven-minute presentation with a little bit of misleading statements, to earmark seventy-five thousand dollars for a bad idea without appropriate vetting. If and when we get the money from the grant, the Select Board has the authority to hold a public hearing to vet the proposal, and then for all of us to come together and decide what the priorities are. I'd also like to say that I work as a climate research analyst, and I've been concerned about the climate my whole life. I am not opposed to a bike way, but I do think that this is absolutely the wrong location. It goes directly through threatened species habitat, and we know that that is going to be an afterthought for any civil engineering consultant. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll return now to the gymnasium, and we'll go to microphone number one.
Kate McAnaney, fifty-eight Walnut Street. I don't understand the basis for saying that you're going to have an engineered surface that's accessible, that won't require tree clearing and widening to build that. It just doesn't make sense to me. I can think of eight or ten areas that are going to need to be widened, and I could probably go out and flag the trees that are going to have to go. We have invested a lot in this state in turning railroad right-of-way into paved engineered corridors. I don't think we have to turn every single right-of-way into that. A paved engineered surface is much different than the character of what we have now with railroad right-of-way that have gradually turned into natural corridors. I, with my husband and children and dogs, have used that corridor extensively over the past twelve years since we've lived here. I would be devastated if it was turned into a high-speed transportation corridor or any kind of engineered surface. I really think it would take away from the character, specifically since it goes right adjacent to Great Meadows. I hope that folks who want to be transported quickly from one place to another on a bike can use the paved surface, that's Bedford Street, that's immediately adjacent. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to microphone number two.
My name is Karen Young. I live at forty-nine Crest Street. I am also a member of the Commission on Disability, but I am speaking for myself. I am in favor of Article forty-six to undertake a feasibility study of the Reformatory Branch Trail. My son is an avid bike rider. He is also one of many Concord residents who does not and cannot drive, but he is able to independently get around on his own, thanks to the bike paths. Safety is always a major concern, and determining how to improve the Reformatory Trail so that others like him or those with mobility issues can also access and enjoy the nature and beauty of the trail and have the opportunity to be outdoors in a tranquil setting, which should be of primary importance in deciding to fund the feasibility study. The existing trail is man-made. It's not an original feature of the landscape. The surface is hard-packed in many places and does not need to be paved, nor do large numbers of trees need to be cut in order to make it accessible. Access to the trail is currently limited by its condition, which is not passable in places depending upon the weather, and nor is it accessible due to uneven terrain, to steep, steep grades, metal hatches, and even trees in the trail. There are many miles of trails in Concord, but the vast majority are primarily for walkers, hikers, and runners. It would seem only appropriate that the trails that serve as transportation routes... Whoops! Huh. Okay.
Well, keep talking. We can hear you.
That the trails be made available to everyone in keeping with the Concord's goal of reducing the number of miles we drive around town and beyond. It's hard to take advantage of the bike trails if they're not fully accessible. Enhancing the Reformatory Branch Trail would provide a safe commuter and recreational-friendly means of traveling between here and Cambridge. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go now to microphone number three.
Hello, Nicole Palmer, twenty-five Cranefield Road. The trail along Great Meadows National Wildlife Refuge offers us a chance to unplug from the stresses of daily life and reconnect to nature. Concord residents enjoy numerous year-round activities along the trail, hiking, snowshoeing, cross-country skiing, bird watching, and yes, even biking. So why do the bicyclists need a trail paved, or whatever paving you were speaking of, for speed? Paving this trail would be dangerous to those of us who enjoy the current purpose of the trail, unplugging, relaxing. If you walk the trail any day of the week, any time of the year, you will pass elderly couples and families with young children who enjoy this scenic nature without fearing a speeding bicyclist will knock them over. There are hundreds of weekly joggers who can't run on pavement without stress to their knees. They prefer trail running to connect with nature. I think we've all experienced, in the pandemic, the city people running to Concord to get out into nature. They weren't running to Concord with their bikes to get on the trails. They were on foot, listening to the birds, seeing the turtles. Similar, similar to Great Meadows, Wellfleet Local, the Wellfleet Local Opposition killed the bike path link to Route Six along the Cape Cod National Seashore. Superintendent Brian Colstrom summed up the financial consequences. We are not, quote, "we are not interested in developing new bike paths. We're not intending to create new assets that we'll be forced to maintain." Although I live adjacent to the trail, this is not a NIMBY argument. Numerous studies indicate properties along the trail actually increase.
Okay, you will have to wrap it up. Thank you very much.
I just say, then be opposed to paving the trail.
Thank you. We'll return now to the auditorium.
And I think it's the woman to my right first. Go ahead, please.
Hi, I'm Bijah Satterlee, one oh three Minuteman Drive. I live in the neighborhood that abuts the Minuteman Trail, excuse me, the Reformatory Branch Trail and the Great Meadows. The Blandings' turtles' mothers have to cross the trail to come into the neighborhoods that are sandy so that they can lay their eggs, and the babies have to cross the trail back to the meadow once they've hatched. I'm sure you already know this. Since we're such a historic town, I hope you'll indulge me because I'd like to bring up some important information from a nineteen ninety-five study. I think that the last time that Concord did a comprehensive study of the bikeways, it was, I'll read you just a few things. The background was the Concord Bikeways Task Force was created by the Board of Selectmen to assist the town developing a policy on the planned extension of the Minuteman Bike Way from Bedford Center into Concord. So this has been being talked about since nineteen ninety-five. However, as the task force began deliberating, it became clear that all the potential bike way routes in town should be identified. The full range of issues of bikeways should be, should deserve an adequate study. They did several goals. One was to identify characteristics, needs of the various users, identify five corridors around town that could be bike trails, identify the issues relating to bicycle use, vehicles, and pedestrians, and they prepared a set of recommendations for the selectmen. So I read this to you because even though it's from nineteen ninety-five, some things never change. And the five corridors that they looked at were Lowell, Sudbury, Concord, to Bedford Center, and so forth. They clearly recommended, after going everything, through everything and speaking to U.S. Fish and Wildlife, they recommended against it because of the wildlife damage, because of the extra traffic that would be coming to the, to the Great Meadows, and they recommended instead something along sixty-two or old Concord Road. So perhaps, and they said because of these legitimate concerns.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Nadia Yaso, 100 Keys Road. I moved to Concord last year from Cambridge, the land of asphalt, where I lived for 34 years. I sought and found respite here during the pandemic in the natural beauty of Concord, most notably walking the Reformatory Branch Trail, a unique, wide, all-natural trail that effectively connects to national parks. There's nothing quite like it in Concord or anywhere else. The natural state of this trail allows for, almost forces us to slow down and connect in a meaningful way, meaningful ways, with nature, which is also sustained by it. I am painfully familiar with the Minuteman Trail. A few years ago, I was run down in Somerville by a cyclist traveling at excessive speeds and ended up in the emergency room with 14 stitches. People I know who use wheelchairs and strollers for children will not access the Reformatory -- will not access the Minuteman Trail because it is dangerous. So much for accessibility. Once asphalt goes down, it does not get removed. A feasibility study isn't about whether to do something, but about how to get the desired result. I hope that Concord will not rush into this ill-advised slippery slope of Article 46, which could result in the effective irreversible urbanization of this unique and special Concord treasure, causing harm to humans and other living things. I advise voting no on Article 46. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take one more speaker in the auditorium. That would be the gentleman in the center.
Scott Richardson, 260 Elsinore Street. The Beatles said it best, "Let it be."
Thank you for that brevity and concise sentiment. We'll go back to the gymnasium now and we'll go to microphone number one.
Thomas Doherty, 238 Peter Spring. Thank you for making me follow that comment. Can I ask a question first? Has the article changed since the publication of the warrant?
Yes. The motion under the article looks a little bit different. We can put that back on the screen for you if you like.
Could you please? I apologize. Thank you. I don't have --
Oh, actually, you know what?
I apologize. I don't have the handout, so.
Yeah, okay. So it has changed a little bit, and specifically, there is, it is now on the basis of a recommendation to the Select Board to allocate $75,000 of such funds as may be made available to the town from the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. And there is now a little bit more description of the feasibility study and needs assessment to be undertaken. There was a handout out on the materials table, and it's now not just a feasibility study, but a feasibility study or needs assessment, and it is to be undertaken by a consulting firm, chosen by the town manager, and it relates to grading and drainage and to all sections of the Reformatory Branch Trail. Appropriate to current uses, natural resource protection, accessibility for persons with mobility changes, and public safety inconvenience, all is consistent with the town's sustainability principles. So, yes.
Thank you. I'd ask if I could just have more than 13 seconds?
Yes, I used a bit of your time. We'll start your clock again.
Thank you. I'd just like to begin briefly by saying, and I know this is nitpicking, but in the presentation, it was suggested that moms in strollers use the trail. It was also suggested that it's 2020, not even 1995. And as a dad with a stroller, I know this is nitpicky, but we've got to get beyond this type of thinking. I have been pushing my son in a stroller for the past four years. I'm proud of it, and I think that we do need to recognize that dads do these jobs, too. You also might be shocked, if you think that only moms push strollers, that I use the trail regularly to walk from my house at 238 Peter Spring Road to Concord Market to do the grocery shopping. So dads do that also, just so you know. When I do that, often with my four-year-old son, the biggest danger I have is not muddy puddles, it's not steep grades, it's fast bicycles. Fast bicycles who don't seem to have any regard for a dad in a stroller. Maybe if I was a mom, they'd take more care, but they don't. And my son and I have routinely been nearly hit by fast-moving bicycles. Anything that would create more fast-moving bicycles would then make it harder for me, not easier for me, to leave my car at home, walk down the trail, and do the grocery shopping. I hope that, it's not that the trail couldn't use some improvements. It certainly could, but that's not what this is really about, and I think we're probably starting to get to that repetitive point here. But we know that's not what this is about. This is about making a high-speed bikeway, and that's something that we just don't need. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go to microphone number two.
My name is Ethan. What? I live in 188 Walden Street.
Thank you.
I can't drive my A car. My bike is my train rotation. I ride my bike to my job to visit my friends and family in West Concord on the weekends. I like to ride to Cambridge and Somerville on the bike trail. I want to ride safely in all weather and not get stuck in mud or sand. Please fix the --
Reformatory.
Reformatory trail so everyone can use it.
Thank you very much. And we will go now to microphone number three.
Lola Chason, 77, Walden Street. Remember the number 77? Wayne Loeb can't be here tonight, and so I wanted, he put an excellent article in the paper, which I actually printed something about Concord. I was shocked. But he also, in answer to someone else's question, he kind of figured out with the Bruce Freeman Trail, it's mostly 10 feet wide with asphalt pavement with one and a half to two-foot wide shoulders, okay? It's narrower than most trails. It's, the shoulders are covered with stone dust, which becomes impermeable, or packed dirt, where pedestrians can walk or step off the trail to make way for cyclists. This works out to some 13 to 14 feet wide. It is significantly narrower than the proposed Bedford Reformatory Branch Trail that didn't pass, that would go west to the Concord, almost to the Concord Town Line. That bikeway would be 12 feet wide, asphalt pavement with three-foot shoulders totaling 18 feet wide. If the RBT is widened to only 13 feet total, which is narrow for a bikeway, remember that number I told you? Some 77 trees, and they're not small trees. These are substantial mature trees. If you're thinking sustainability, some 77 trees for the narrowest of bike trails would need to be removed. And the state biologists would have to approve the removal of each and every one of them because the RBT is entirely within the state priority habitat. I'm a bicyclist. I would love it if you could bike safely along Route 62. I would have gone to my studio that way. But I am, whatever. The Reformatory Branch Trail, I do bike on it. I do slow down for men with strollers, and --
And you will --
It is my favorite trail. Bye.
Thank you very much. We're going to return to the auditorium now. Okay. The gentleman in the center, please.
My name is Claudio Topolcic from 78 Elm Street.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. I just, I think I'm repeating some of what has been said, but I think I can add something to it. I had a job for about 15 years in Arlington, and I used to walk on the Minuteman Bike Trail quite a bit as an exercise, and it, any thought of connecting Concord into that system, I think, I consider a very bad idea. That was a very dangerous place to walk. I would not take a stroller there. I would not take kids on there unless they're, you're very aware of what's going on and the high speed. Again, it's all about high-speed bikes who are reckless and not paying attention to anybody else. And so I think it would be, anything that connects it to would be a very bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker in the auditorium. Okay. That would be this woman again, on the right. Your turn.
Pamela Drit, 13 Concord Green. I thought at the beginning, I was enthusiastically in favor of this, a study for this, but then I learned more about it and I have strongly changed my mind. We've already had a comprehensive bikeways study in 1995, recommended against development on this particular trail. Also, it's historically been opposed by Great Meadows, and then there's the turtles and the other endangered species. It's the whole ecosystem that needs protection. And Article 46 proponents have been pressing for over two years to turn it into an extension of the Minuteman Bike Way. This is the wrong location. Town resources would better be spent studying other options, like a bike path on 62 or something. Highly controversial paving and widening plans have stalled in Bedford. If approved, Article 46 will be used by Bedford paving advocates to pressure Bedford citizens to revisit their vote, and pressure will also increase on Concord to follow suit. I'm with the Beatles, gentlemen.
Thank you. Next speaker in the auditorium. In the center, please.
Theodore Scott, 215 Elsinore Street. I call the question.
All right. We've been at this for more than a half an hour, so that is an appropriate motion for us. This is a non-debatable motion to stop debate and go directly to a vote. We need two-thirds vote to pass it. All those in favor of calling the question and going to a vote, thank you very much. All those opposed, that clearly passes in the --
Care of this trail should be able to speak.
I'm sorry, is there a point of order?
There's one man who takes care of this trail. One man who takes care of this trail, and he should get the opportunity to speak.
Sorry. It's up to the meeting how long the meeting wishes to debate an article, and if the meeting wants to stop talking about the article and vote, that's what the meeting does. So, this is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of moving the question and going directly to a vote, thank you very much. All those opposed, thank you. That passes by well more than two-thirds in the gymnasium. How about in the auditorium? Likewise, in the auditorium. All right. We're ready for a vote on Article 46. All those in favor of Article 46, please raise your voting slip. Thank you very much. All those opposed, the motion fails by a clear majority in the gymnasium. How about in the auditorium? Likewise, it fails by a wide majority here. Okay. The meeting has taken no action on Article 46 by a clear majority, and I do so declare. Thank you. We'll now proceed to Article 47. And the motion under Article 47 is to take affirmative action on the article as printed in the warrant. Now, we didn't reprint the warrant in the Finance Committee report, and there aren't extra copies, but there were sections of, relevant sections of the warrant for this evening that were copied and printed on the materials table, so you should have that. And may I have a second for the motion? Thank you very much. I see that I have one, and we'll hear from Mr. Galis.
Mark Galis, 62 Prescott Road. We have the slides? You ready to go?
You've got them. You're ready to go.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article 47 is being moved as printed in the warrant. It is a recommendation and does not rule out changes to the trail. Next, or, oh, I'm sorry, that's what I want. What it does recommend to the owners of the trail and to those who take care of it is that the trail continue to be maintained in an unpaved natural condition for walking, hiking, jogging, dog walking, nature immersion, nature observation, photography, and cycling. It recommends that any future changes made to drainage, to features affecting individuals with reduced mobility, or to other aspects of the trail, be done in a way that causes the least injury possible to existing trees, does not clearcut trees to make the trail wider, and preserves to the greatest extent possible the existing natural characteristics of the trail. Thank you. Next line? Next line, thank you. Concord's Reformatory Branch Trail is a gem of natural beauty and rare species habitat. This town asset is currently enjoyed by a wide range of users, including walkers, joggers, dog walkers, bird watchers, as well as cyclists of all levels and ages. Next. In light of recent threats to the survival of this exemplar of a mixed-use natural trail, this article affirms the town's commitment to protect and to preserve it. Threats to this natural trail include special interests who favor extending the asphalt-paved Minuteman Bike Way through Concord, using the Reformatory Branch Trail as the first step to implement a vision of MAPC Transportation Planning, Metropolitan Area Planning Council, a state agency. Next. At the October 21st, 2021 HATS meeting, Hanscom area town selectmen, the MAPC senior transportation planner shared his vision of building a bikeway through historic Concord, beginning with the Reformatory Branch Trail, a project to be followed by either land-taking and rebridging of two rivers, or by constructing a bikeway along Barrett's Mill Farm. Next, please. Contrary to actual fact, the MAPC's trail map of regional trails mislabels Concord's Reformatory Branch Trail with the inaccurate, unimproved paths image on the left, instead of the more accurate and appropriate natural surface footway image on the right. Next, please. The Reformatory Branch Trail is maintained by the Trails Committee and Trail Stewards with the assistance of the Division of Natural Resources and the Department of Public Works. Next, please. A trail map and guide can be found on the webpage, town webpage of the Natural Resources Division. Next, please. So in this image, you can see the broad red line showing the general location of Concord's Reformatory Branch Trail, which passes through wetland areas, wooded areas, and by farmland. Next. About one mile of the trail directly adjoins U.S. Fish and Wildlife's Great Meadows National Wildlife Refuge, whose large water impoundments appear in dark green at the top, just below the meandering Concord River. Next, please. Importantly, the trail is embedded in the middle of rare species habitat, all of the area shown in light green. Next. These local rare species are in our care. They are our responsibility. Next. Concord's 1995 bikeways task force report stated the goal should be the reservation of this trail for passive pedestrian use, for reasons that are still true: impact on endangered species habitat, U.S. Fish and Wildlife true: impact on endangered species habitat, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service concerns for capacity. Next. From the report, "The greatest concern of the task force and of the public has been the environmental impact that could result from the development of this corridor." Next. "The right-of-way bisects the migration route of the Blandings' turtles, a threatened species, and considerable concern was expressed that the development of a paved heavily-traveled path would further threaten the viability of these animals and their surrounding nesting habitats. This concern still applies." Next. "U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has also objected to development of the path." Next. "The service is concerned that the resulting overuse of the trails in the refuge could threaten the viability of the area and compromise its primary purpose. This concern still applies." Next. "This nature immersive trail in Concord provides important mental and physical health benefits." Next. "Preserving existing mature trees is also very important for local ecology, biodiversity, and environment. Proforestation is when we let trees grow to their full potential. New research has indicated that old trees capture vastly more carbon each year compared to young trees. We need to conserve our old trees." Next. "Concord's Reformatory Branch Trail is an exemplar of a mixed-use natural trail, and this article reaffirms the town's commitment to protect and preserve it. Please note that the article is a recommendation to keep it as natural as possible. It does not preclude adjustments that may be needed or small tuning that people would like to make it, you know, more accessible and usable by more people." Thank you very much. Next one? Please, oh, I left that slide out of my, written here. "In its present state, it does teach us about nature's powers of recovery," and I think that's an important lesson. So, please vote yes on Article forty-seven. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galis. I'd like to note that the Trails Committee recommends affirmative action on Article forty-seven, and I believe we'll hear from Ms. Bates on behalf of the Select Board.
Susan Bates, twenty-eight Concord Green, Unit Six, a member of the Select Board and speaking on behalf of the Select Board. The Select Board recommends affirmative action on Article forty-seven. The article recommends that various owners of portions of the Reformatory Branch Trail recognize the value in preserving the natural features of the trail. This is a recommendation, not a mandate, which the Select Board supports.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. We'll now open the floor to questions and comments on Article forty-seven, and we'll go first to microphone number one.
David Clark, twenty-six Bartlett Hill, a member of the Concord Trails Committee, but speaking for myself.
Mr. Clark.
I live across the street from an entrance to the Reformatory Branch Trail, so I am a frequent walker, biker, and caretaker, as is my family. I enview the Reformatory Branch as an inherited gift from the past. It is level, wide, with cuts through highlands and overfills across the lowlands and wetlands. It's not a natural trail, but it's a beautiful trail. I would have preferred Article forty-six. I think it had a specific plan. But I want to thank the proponents of both Articles forty-six and forty-seven for the recognition of the multiple uses and needs of the Reformatory Branch Trail. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go to microphone number two.
Michael O'Leary, sixty-eight Cambridge Turnpike.
Mr. O'Leary.
Um, yeah, the Reformatory Trail could use some improvement, but cutting down trees and paving it is not the way to improve it. So, please, keep it as natural as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go now to microphone number three.
Tanya Galis, sixty-two Prescott Road.
Ms. Galis.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I just want to reiterate that Mark and I are very sensitive to the needs of people with mobility issues and others who want a little bit safer walking and recreational biking conditions on the trail. So, this is a recommendation. It is just to keep the trail natural, and we were planning this not in opposition to Article forty-six only, but before we even knew about Article forty-six. So, we thank town meeting for their vote on forty-six, and we hope we will all support to keep this trail natural as we consider the needs of mobility access issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone waiting to speak in the auditorium?
I do not believe so. Nobody's sitting in a seat. No.
All right. Thank you. Let's go to microphone number one.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Lyndon Neiman, fifty-nine Mallard Drive. I apologize for my outburst earlier, but I hope everyone here that's still around that's going to vote for this article, take a moment to think about the man who takes care of this trail alone. He's a volunteer who's done it for over fifteen years, wasn't able to speak. And those of you who enjoy the trail and remark on its beauty and how great it is, it's because of the efforts of this one volunteer. It's not wonderful because it's natural, it's because someone is actively working to remove the branches, the trees that come down with every storm, that work on the drainage. He's out there leaf-blowing. I hope those of you who enjoy the trail volunteer and help him. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Microphone number two.
Hugh McCrory, fifty-nine Lee Drive.
Mr. McCrory.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Madam Moderator, I was very disappointed that this debate has been allowed, has been misrepresented. I think the previous article did not mention paving it, did not mention cutting down trees. And I think the amount of debate here actually shows the need for a study, not prevent a need for a study.
Now, sir, we've already acted on that article. Do you have any...
I do have a question, actually, for the, for the proponent of forty-seven. So, the, his article does talk about maintenance of trails, correct?
Uh, is there a question? The question is, does the article address maintenance of trails?
I believe it does refer to maintenance of trails. So, I'm, I am curious if he would be supportive of maintenance of trails with regards to drainage or grading.
Mr. Galis, are you in favor of maintenance of the trail?
Yes. The, my, you know, the trail is being maintained. I certainly support funding for the Public Works Department to do more maintenance. We have been shortchanging the Public Works Department, and I do applaud the volunteer trail steward of the particular trail.
Thank you very much. Anything you wish to add?
Yes. What kind of maintenance? Could you be a bit more specific? Would you support? Because the previous article was specifically looking into that. So, I'm confused between forty-seven and...
I, I believe forty-six has been discussed. There's a lot I could say about it, but I don't think this is the time, if you'd like to speak afterwards.
Yeah. So, let's not let this devolve into a personal conversation. I want to note that the, that the article before us asks for the trail to continue to be maintained in an unpaved natural condition. So, if, if your question is, what does the petitioner mean by unpaved natural condition, we can ask him to answer that question.
I'll put the question to you, Madam Moderator. The pre, there was an awful lot of confusion on the previous article about paving. There was no mention of paving in the previous...
I'm so sorry.
And you allowed it as a moderator of the meeting, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, but, but we're done, we're done with the previous article, however, so we're addressing Article forty-seven now. So, if you would like to know what type of maintenance the petitioner has in mind, I think that's a fair question, and we can ask him to answer that question.
Yeah, I'm trying to decide whether to support it, but I need to understand the maintenance that he refers to in his, in his presentation.
That's fine. So, Mr. Galis, can you tell us, please, what kind of maintenance do you have in mind in your article when you say you wish for the trail to be maintained in an unpaved and natural condition?
It's my understanding, to the best of my knowledge, that there is periodic clearing of drains by the Public Works Department, and, but a lot of work is done by the Trails Committee, sometimes with, if they need heavy equipment to remove fallen trees and things with some other assistance. There, it is absolutely right, as somebody mentioned, that there's, it's a lot of work to maintain the trail. And when I say maintain in a natural condition, I primarily mean not, you know, bulldozing and tree clearing and flattening and paving.
Thank you very much.
That's what I don't, what I don't believe is best.
Thank you, Mr. Galis. You can have a seat, and we'll go to microphone number three. Uh, you can sit up here in case we need you again. Go ahead. Microphone number three.
Let's hope not. Brian Crowns, forty-nine Indian Pipeline. Very brief, it's late. I just wanted to mention, I didn't hear a lot of talk about the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail tonight, which I was a little surprised about, which is an improved trail, but it is actually a trail we had a big debate about several years ago. I was personally ambivalent about it being improved further because I loved it in its natural state as it was. But if you come there today, those of you who haven't been there recently, it's fantastic. You can use it four seasons a year, including April and March. You see families out there. You see moms and dads pushing strollers. You see elderly people, I'm not making this up, yesterday morning, an old woman with her walker wheeling along the, the trail. You see people on cargo bikes. I've seen cargo bikes on the trail. And I just want to point that out, is, and we can have different solutions for different parts of towns, I realize there are different contexts, but the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail does cut through a wetland. There was a lot of construction, but if you come to it now, it is, it's fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I still don't see any speakers in the auditorium. We'll go to microphone number one.
Thank you. Toby Cotton, two-two-three Losbrook Road.
Yes.
The Reformatory Trail is really beautiful. I recently took a very slow walk down part of the trail. I have multiple sclerosis, and there are parts of the trail that are inaccessible to me. So, I hope that as your viewing of the trail continues, that you will keep that in mind because there was another speaker who also was hoping that accessibility would be really considered because I like it too, and I'd like to be able to access it. It's difficult at the beginning, and it's difficult when you cross this road. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Microphone number two.
Hi there. Ryan Hanley of seventy-seven Lexington Road. As a very new Concordian, I have to say, I've fallen in love with the trail and am very grateful to the volunteer gentleman who's been mentioned a couple of times, and I'm very happy to contribute my services, so I hope he can find me afterwards and put me to work helping to maintain this. But also, as a new Concordian, I do have a question. A couple of times, reference was made to the quote-unquote "various" owners of the, of the trail lands, and I just wonder, as a point of information, if some light could be shed on who exactly these owners are. I presume that it's some mixture of federally managed property with great meadows, but perhaps also private landowners. I'd just be very grateful to have some light shed on who it is that owns this wonderful property that I get to enjoy. Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Galis, you can feel free to answer that.
I will give you the benefit of my limited knowledge on the subject. I believe that in some sense, the entire trail is owned by the town of Concord. The portion, and it's my understanding, and again, I haven't checked, you know, property records and all this type of thing, but there are at least two complicating factors which, depending what you mean by ownership or control, affect it. So, I believe that between Monument Street and Lowell Road, it passes through a Natural Resources Commission Conservation Restricted kind of park area, and that from Lowell Road, actually, actually from Kaiser Road, I guess, pumping station, there's a forty-eight-inch pressured sewer main that runs from Lowell Road to the waste treatment plant. So, there is a utilities right-of-way there. So, and there may be other complications. When you mention great meadows, they don't, as far as I know, they don't own any of it. But the portion from Monson Road access to the parking lot at Great Meadows, towards the east, towards Bedford, part of that was improved by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife prior to nineteen ninety-five, and they use it as an access road for their other facilities to the east of the impoundments. And furthermore, Mr. Wayne Love, who's been studying as a volunteer, he's a trail steward for the Emerson Thoreau-Hamble, he has been observing use of the trail recently and points out that that improved section of the trail is a heavily-used return route for visitors to the Great Meadows who walk across the, park at the parking lot, walk across the dyke, go clockwise around the eastern impoundment, and come back right on this trail, walking.
Thank you very much, Mr. Galis. We'll go now to microphone number three.
Hi, I'm Josh Burgle, thirty-nine East Circle.
Mr. Burgle.
I'm a landscape architect, and one of the things that we are taught is to understand the words we use. And unpaved and natural are two very specific words that are now a recommendation in this article. And we have to be careful what we wish for because if we want it to be unpaved and natural, we need to understand those terms. That means that you cannot do anything to it, pick up sticks, do anything man-made for, for that part of the trail. I think that that would be a mistake, but the idea of the article is great, and maybe we should strive for something more like bucolic or a sense of history to the trail, which is what we are striving for here. So, just be careful with the wording and take it at that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Microphone number one.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Nate Kemp, fifty-nine Mallard Drive. Echoing what the last commenter said, natural condition, what does natural condition mean? Is that the natural one that existed in eighteen sixty, before the railroad was built? Or is that the natural condition that exists today, an abandoned railroad bed? They're very different and not at all reversible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see that we have a speaker waiting in the auditorium. Let's go to the auditorium.
I do. Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Hi, Ellie Garvey, twenty-five Damon Street, and I'd like to call the question, please.
Okay. Well, yep, we've been discussing that long enough for that to be an appropriate motion. So, this is non-debatable, and if the meeting is ready to stop deliberating and go to a vote, the meeting will decide, and we'll do that by a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of calling the question and moving to a vote, thank you very much. All those opposed. The meeting, the motion clearly passes by more than two-thirds in the gymnasium. How about in the auditorium?
I believe it was unanimous in the auditorium.
All right. We will then proceed to a vote on Article forty-seven. Point of order, yes, go ahead. Speak to the microphone, please. I cannot hear you. Speak to the microphone.
I was standing up, I'm Tim Rose, ninety-seven Bartlett Hill Road.
Mr. Rose.
I called the point of order because I was standing up here to answer one of the questions about who owns the trail. And if you want me to provide that information, I would do, be allowed to do so.
I think we're good, Mr. Rose, but thank you very much. All right. So, the motion, pa, okay, so we're now ready for a vote on the main motion. All those in favor of the recommendation sought in Article forty-seven, please raise your voting slip. Thank you very much. All those opposed. Okay, the motion passes by a clear majority in the gymnasium. How about in the auditorium?
Likewise, here, I would say overwhelmingly.
Okay. That is a vote, and I do so declare. I have no motion under Article 47, and I therefore declare that the meeting is taking no action on, I'm sorry, Article 48. I declare the meeting is taking no action on Article 48. I have no motion under Article 49, and declare that the meeting is taking no action under Article 49, and I will entertain a motion to dissolve 2022 Annual Town Meeting. I see that we have that motion. Is there a second? I see that we have a second. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? The meeting is dissolved. Thank you all.